Three, two, one.
Good evening. I'm Bernard Green, Chairman of the Brookline Select Board, and this is the regular meeting of the Select Board for July 1st, 2025. I'm joining tonight's meeting from home via Zoom because I recently tested positive for COVID. Not a bad case, but no one needs to be exposed to it. I asked David Pearlman to help me recognize select board members who want to speak if I begin to have trouble with that. And here's John Van Scoyeck. Hello, John.
Hello.
So let's start off with announcements from select board members. Anyone have an announcement to make or a statement or anything? No?
No takers.
Nothing happened last week, huh?
It was quiet.
Let's have a public comment now. Charlie, read the rules.
Sure thing, Bernard. Thank you for joining us for public comment. This is an opportunity for us to hear your perspective on the issues in Brookline that matter to you. Each person speaking tonight is limited to three minutes. You don't need to use the entire time, but you may if you like. Once fifteen minutes has been met, there's an opportunity at the conclusion of the select board's business for additional comments. Members of the public sometimes raise questions during public comment. We may be able to provide a quick answer to a question, but are more likely to work with staff to get a thorough answer and respond over email. We'll let you know when you have thirty seconds remaining and when your time is up. Please conclude your remarks at that time. If you have more to say, you are welcome to send an email to board members expressing your thoughts in greater detail. Any person wishing to speak must begin their comment by identifying themselves with their full name, either their Brookline precinct number or street address, and the specific topic on which they wish to speak. The board encourages, but does not require that remote users turn their video on when commenting. We have no one signed up for public comment. Folks in the room can raise their hand, or if you're online, you can use the hand raise feature to let us know that you would like to speak.
Okay, doesn't look like anyone wants to speak.
Yes, we have thirteen participants and nobody is raising their hands. So I think I think we're clear to continue, Bernard.
Let's get into the meat of the meeting then. Okay, first of all, question of approving the minutes from June 24th, 2025. I asked Kate to include in the minutes my statement from last week about the impact of a possible war in the Middle East on Brookline. So I assume there's no objection to that? Or any other edits to the minutes? Okay, I move approval. I'm sorry.
I, I'm sorry. Bernard, I just had a couple of technical corrections, and I just wanted to make sure that both Paul and I were listed as you remarked on the JFK trip.
Oh, good. Thank you. Okay, with those edits, I move approval of the minutes for June 24, 2025 as amended. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Scoyeck?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
David Pearlman?
Aye.
Michael Rubenstein?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Excuse me. Next, I'd like to take items 3B through 3I in the under this fashion, unless someone would like to pull an item out for further discussion. I'd actually, if someone is in the audience who can talk about the MOA and non-disclosure agreement with EverSource and National Grid, I think it'd be useful for people to know about this grant and those two companies that is enabling us to perform outreach services to support energy efficiency programs. Is there anyone who could? Talk about that?
Charlie?
I'm sorry, John. I don't have quick insights for you. I don't see anyone here, Bernard, who can, who can speak on that.
Well, I just think people should know that this is a grant from those two companies to the town of Brookline to support a part-time employee to make outreach to so-called priority groups, which are small landlords and low-income customers, moderate-income customers, and people whose language is other than English, as well as all other small businesses, to let them know about the opportunities to increase their energy efficiency and reduce their carbon impact. I think that's a good program, and I thank our sustainability director, excuse me, for her initiative in pulling this together, Alexander Abakio. So with that, I move approval of items 3B through 3I. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Scoyeck?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
David Pearlman?
Aye.
Michael Rubenstein?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay, let's go to our main calendar. Noise bylaw waiver. I think Lapland is gonna make a presentation on that regarding the waiver of the noise bylaw with respect to work being done at Brookline High School.
Lap said he would be online, and I'm not seeing him online right now. I'm gonna shoot him a quick email, Bernard. Maybe we should circle back on this item after, you know, the next one, although the next one I don't see. We can take those social media policy and I can send Lap an email.
Okay. This is actually a public hearing scheduled for 6:00 PM. It's 5:40, so.
There was a suggestion made about moving on to item number six.
Yeah, so we have to do that. This is a public hearing. Media engagement policy and the social media policy. Christina Metcalf will be making a presentation on this. Christina?
Good evening, Select Board. Thank you for having me here to talk about these policies tonight. I'm just going to take a quick minute to share my screen. Okay. I just want to make a note that this afternoon, the Select Board packet was updated with answers to the questions that Mr. Rubenstein answered, asked me, and thank you for sending those ahead of time. So those can be found in the packet with some additional information. The media engagement policy is a new policy. It codifies the procedure that I've slowly, unofficially put in place for media inquiries. So any department or person that gets a media inquiry from any media outlet will be able to respond to me and have a, it clarifies the rules, it gives the procedure. So if they get an inquiry via phone or email, letting the reporter or person knowing, asking questions, asking for a deadline, and then getting back to me and just looping me in. Sometimes it's a procedural question that they're asking, and it's publicly available information, and they're just trying to confirm information. Other times, it could be something that should be bumped up to a department head or division head and have that response. It clarifies the rules, and usually if it's an on-air or just a quote from somebody, usually our department and division heads are the ones to go on air versus having, getting an email back. It provides some best practices. So instead of saying no comment, you know, we don't have any information at this time. We'll get back to you and other best practices in interacting with the media. And it establishes myself as a resource for staff looking to maybe bounce ideas or just have a conversation about the response and make sure that they're in line with the town administrators' views on that and the town's best interests.
Can I ask a question? So what is, when you, you're, I don't think you meant to leave out the select board there, but, so the select board members often get media inquiries. Is that, how does that fit into what you just said?
So honestly, it's just a looping me in so that, and sometimes we've had, I know that we've had a, something I can think of recently is that a reporter had reached out to Chaz and to Bernard wanting a comment, and by the time we got ahold of Bernard, Bernard had already had the conversation. So we didn't have to do that sort of back and forth and emailing and whatnot. So it's just making sure that, again, I'm in the loop, and if, you know, if they're reaching out to Chaz, if they're reaching out to you, if they're reaching out to other department heads to sort of know and say, hey, this is all going on, we're getting inquiries from NBC, and they want to know about this, and just saying they're reaching out to all these different people. Here's the sort of position that we're taking as a town, and to make sure sort of everybody's on the same page with their answer, obviously not limiting to you, to your opinion as a select board member or.
Well, that was, I guess that was my point, is that you may find that there are different opinions on the select board. It's a politically elected position. That's different than what a staff member may say. So we wouldn't be limited.
No.
Okay.
In terms of, it's just, it's just the looping in so we're aware. And if you, I think that, I think there was a point, I think, maybe a few months ago, a year ago, that you had done an interview or was on a panel talking about the MDA Communities Act. And so it's something like that where you're doing some sort of press and just aware like that we could share that or just, you know, knowing that it's out there so that if I get asked about it, I'm not caught off guard as the town communications officer and that direct, one of the direct contacts for media.
Yeah. And of course, this all, this all assumes that in expressing our opinion, our individual opinions, we make clear that it is our opinion, not the position of the select board or the town. But it really requires us to be very careful in dealing with the media because we know the dangers that that could cause. I also want to mention that the Select Board talked about a communications protocol a year, a little more than a year ago, that maybe we should revisit in terms of not controlling the select board's responses to communications or comments or questions from the community, but just a protocol to ensure that when, when a select board member makes a response to a community member's question or comment, that they're able to get the latest information from the relevant town department so that, you know, what, what they say is, is accurate and, you know, complete. So when Tiffany gets back, I'll discuss with her what we want to do with that so-called protocol.
And again, I think the Select Board does an excellent job of, of reaching out when there is media, especially if it's a high-profile issue that needs a coordinated response. We've had other issues that have, with other boards that may just need a little bit of guidance so they know that it's a, that I, as well as their, they can reach out to their boards and department liaisons to have a resource if they're not sure of how to talk to, or, you know, what, what they should and should not be maybe saying, just depending on if there's sensitive information, confidential information, and at what point they should be divulging that or not.
One follow-up, Bernard, if I may?
Yeah.
I know what, she's still working on her presentation, but so, and I appreciated you bringing up, kind of responding to the public, but we have, you and I have chatted a number of times, and I don't think we've really figured this out. It's an opportunity where something has happened within the community and probably needs a statement from the Select Board, but yet the Select Board really can't issue a statement because we can't deliberate. You know, over the phone, we can't develop a, a public statement meaning from the Select Board. You know, I'm thinking of the issue that raised with, with the incident with the brick being thrown through, through the window at the butcher area. So I just, it would be good to try to figure that out, too, because sometimes a statement, the timeliness of the statement is as important as the statement itself. And we, we do struggle, I think, because we're restricted by the open meeting law crafting statements from, from the board.
Yeah, in, in the past, I don't think it's been a problem when I, you know, make a statement. I try to make it as, as non-controversial as possible, taking into consideration what I, you know, believe other people's views are, and just mentioning that, you know, I'm doing it because we can't deliberate and come up with a, a formal policy at a, you know, posted meeting.
Yeah. Again, my, my, my feedback is not, my bringing this up is not a commentary or criticism of any statements that you've made.
Yeah, no, I know.
Sometimes we do trip, we trip over ourselves trying to get a statement.
Bernard, Sean has his hand raised?
Yeah, John?
Thank you very much. And Christina, thank you for everything that you do. I just want to remind everybody listening to this discussion that there was a time not long ago when we didn't have a position of spokesperson, and, you know, we're delighted not just to have the position, but to have our first spokesperson be Christina. That being said, is this going to lead to a, perhaps a more stepped-up approach to issuing statements by the town or issuing news by the town? And I'll just give a couple of examples. There will be occasions when our town administrator, who frankly is very good at this, will send a memo to the Select Board members to let them know about something they really need to know about, you know, that's happening kind of behind the scenes or that happened and they might not know about. And on some of those occasions, I have kind of wished, can we also put this out in a, you know, news release, or can we also put this out in a statement so that I don't know something, but I have to keep quiet about it, when it's in fact something that the public is gonna discover pretty soon? And I, I always am a little bit sensitive, and I think the other members of the board are, too, when it looks like the Select Board is the last people in town to actually step into a discussion of something that has popped up in the news, because we're kind of waiting for there to be a position on this, or we're waiting for it to be confirmed, you know, by the town. So, so is part of the policy here or the intent here to step up the frequency with which we make communications to the public so that the Select Board, when they get a communication, less often will they have to worry about, how many days do I have to keep quiet about this before it looks like the Select Board is the last, you know, the people in town to have come, become aware of a certain situation?
That's a great question. I think that in some instances, there is a call for a period of waiting because you are, you know, in your executive sessions, you're privy to information, and we're waiting for things to be completed behind the scenes. So you might know where we are in the process before everybody else is, but we can't, we need to wait until the process has played out and we, you know, have the ramifications so that when you do talk about it, you're not talking about it in, theoretically, you're talking about an actuality and what's, and what the next steps are. So you're more informed of the complete process, which I understand is, can be frustrating, or you want to be able to share that information. I would say that I, you know, I think in most of those emails, I am included or informed very closely thereafterwards or beforehand, and so making sure that, okay, this is, and determining with Chaz and the rest of the DA team whether or not we need to get that out and what that is going to be doing. And I think that Chaz has also a great job of saying, this is the next step, this is where we're going next, this is the information that's going to be coming out and not going to be coming out. So I think that that's something I can keep in mind moving forward, and we can adjust as we go forward and have that conversation once Chaz is back to, to make sure that we have those sort of next steps of like, this is what can be, this is what embargoed, this is what's going out next, and this is when you can have a conversation with constituents about it.
Mm-hmm. Right. Thanks.
Hey, I don't see anyone else with their hands raised. Any further discussion?
Mike?
Michael? Um, I just want to know if your presentation is finished so that we can see the rest of the presentation before making further comments.
On, on the media engagement policy, yes, but that's not the social media policy.
Okay, let's move on to social media policy, unless someone has questions about the media policy.
So we're updating, excuse me, so we're updating this policy. It hasn't been updated since 2017. It gives a little bit more information about the social media account creation, so who can create it, and making sure we're aligning with best practices, so including approved platform, listing authorized users, training for social media users, the naming of the, the account and the email to you, so it's not a personal account that's being used. So I'm not, I'm not tied to all the town of Brookline accounts. We have a, a social media or social@brooklineMA so that it's an account. So when I move on, very far in the future, that it is, that that stays with the town and it's an easier transfer over to the next person managing the accounts, and this goes for, for all of the other accounts. Some, I think most of our accounts are set up that way, but there are some who did not, unfortunately, go through the, the social media action plan and were created with some personal accounts. It also does official use guidelines. So when you're, for everybody who's posting, it goes through how to, how to post, when to post, if you make a mistake, how to update correctly, how to, if there's a post that needs to be taken down or a comment that needs to be taken down, how to do that, and the correct way to archive it and then delete it. And then there's also, that goes along with the comment and moderation and removal protocol. That's in section four, I believe, or section three of this policy. Personal use guidelines. So as a, as a town official, as somebody who uses social media myself, if you're posting on social media as yourself and posting an opinion about town happenings, that you're doing it and saying, this is my own opinion, this is not the opinion of me in my official position as communications officer or deputy town administrator, it goes and things like that. And yeah, just making sure you're not speaking in a official capacity. The next part, public comment engagement. So what's acceptable of comments, what can be taken down after it's properly archived? The response protocols and best practices. So you don't want to get into a back and forth and create a public forum, but sometimes just information of, this is where you can find this information on our town website so that you can clarify and answer a question that way. And it outlines that, and then the policy, sorry, the employee responsibility and enforcement, just outlines all authorized users should follow this policy and who to contact if they have questions. And there were policy review and updates, just outlines that we will be, that the town administrators' office, HR and IT will review this on an annual basis and decide if it needs any updates, and then come to the HR board and the Select Board if that is the case.
Any questions?
And just.
So far.
Michael?
So I want to refer to one of the questions that I sent you previously about the policies for posting on social media accounts not managed by the town. And you had said, and I'll just quote what you said, "I agree, it can be helpful to post information on public forums, but it can also lead to back and forth comments on posts, or in some cases, people tagging the department in a post as they are a member of the forum, and if that page is not monitored or responded to, that department looks non-responsive or avoidant." I take your point. And nonetheless, I would urge you, especially in cases where departments are soliciting feedbacks, such as there are surveys that people want to promote, or there are opportunities for people to get information that simple, social media posts that simply, as you mentioned before, refer to information that's on the town's website. refer to, uh, information that's on the town's website or other websites, um, would be particularly helpful as a way to get information out broadly. Um, and then of course, anyone else as individuals can then reshare and repost.
Paul?
Thank you Christina. So the, um, Mike had asked a couple of great questions in his memo. Thank you for sending that out. One of them was an inventory of social media platforms and also social media accounts that exist today. Can you talk about what platforms we're on and what departments actually have individual social media accounts?
Sure. So I have a little bit more of a, a broader level view of that. So we have about 14 Facebook accounts, 18 Instagram, 20 Twitter, six LinkedIn, uh, accounts. There are six unofficial. LinkedIn does this thing where if people mention enough time, they sort of create a page and either, either claim it or not claim it, and so we just need to make sure we're not claiming it. There are two TikTok accounts, but they are inactive and one was approved before, um, information was, uh, given to the IT department that determined that we would not have a TikTok account. Um, and so both of those are, are not active as of right now. We have three YouTube, uh, active YouTube pages and channels, um, and then five that are a little bit more inactive or just have had tags of other departments. I can tell you that I would say most of the public facing, um, departments in the town, so DPW, Town Clerk, um, let's see, um, just going by food in my head. Um, obviously that the town, um, the, and, and the, the DPW has, uh, several different pages. They have the Green Dog, uh, Instagram Twitter account. Police has several Instagram pages. There's Officer Katie and Bear. They have the Brookline MA, uh, MA account. They have the Brookline Animal Control account. Um, Brookline Planning has an account. Um, and I can get you that more detailed.
So any of these, that's, that's really helpful. It would be great to see a list, like which departments in a matrix, understand coverage and who's responsible. That's, I, I'm surprised, that's actually more than I would have expected, to tell you the truth.
These are on the website too, right Christina? That list hasn't been updated and some of those links need to be adjusted and they will be once this, uh, goes through.
And, um, there's the Paul, I didn't see a component of this, but related to, um, groups like the townwide Facebook page, can a department join the town like Facebook page?
I think there are a couple of departments that, I know of at least one that has joined. There's debate back and forth of whether the town, like the town, the official town Facebook page should join. Um, again, it's a, a fine line to walk of wanting to make sure that we're, we're monitoring and issues and being able to respond to things, but also not, um.
It would be helpful to discuss that. Um, you know, that, um, it's one thing to have a social media account where we're pushing information out, people engage with us. It's another to go into the fray of a group. And I, I would be hesitant to support any department head officially being part of, of a large social media group. I, I don't know how to, how do others feel? It makes me, it's an interesting concept. What, what do others think?
May I just jump in? I, I'm thinking about Brookline Townwide Discussion Page, which all of us occasionally drop a comment on maybe, or some news.
Well, well, in, in, individually, yeah, um, in our individual capacity, but there's no official select board.
Oh, no, no.
And there's a difference between the select board members doing that and, and the town department head doing that. Or someone representing a town department.
Well, I, I think.
Paul is really concerned about the latter.
I think DPW occasionally has posts on the townwide forum, just about, in, in, of an informational nature, right? We have such and such an event coming up. It's from X hour to Y, uh, but not really opining in any way. So if it's purely informational, I would be comfortable with that type of presence, but I would agree to be very careful and there needs to be a fine line.
And I just, I just remember during the, the DPW discussion of outsourcing and I, I, I can't remember the specifics, but I, I think one individual kept tagging, uh, you know, the department Facebook page, um, which I think was, uh, was, was happening. Again, I'm, it's just, I don't know the answer. It's just, uh, it's just an interesting place sandbox to be playing in. If there's 14 departments in there, maybe there should just be one official announcement area for, for the town, the town of Brookline, had, you know, and tells what it is. And then they, then they could point back to the social media page if someone wanted to get more information. That's all.
Michael?
Yeah. Um, first of all, I agree with you, Paul, that this is a worthwhile discussion for us as a group to have. And also, um, want to commend you for bringing it forward. The other question that this raises, of course, is if you want to centralize the management of those interactions, how much capacity we have in our communication department to actually do all of that centralization? Because that, that could potentially be a lot of work. I am not enough of a social media guru to understand the ramifications of the tagging that you describe, whether or not that's actually problematic. Just, you know, i- if for example.
Depends on what's being tagged.
Well, it depends on what's being tagged and who's tagging it and what their reputations are. I'm, I'm sure all of those things go into, uh, into the matter. But, but it would be, it would be worthwhile, I think, from what you're saying, Paul, and I agree with you, to have some sort of, whether it's in the form of a white paper or some sort of, uh, accounting of this question and the various pros and cons for the select board to review.
Yeah, it's just, I think it's a complex issue.
Right.
Participating in the townwide Facebook page is a complex issue.
But whether it's.
Individuals, and then if you're in official capacity.
But whether it's the townwide Facebook page or the r slash Brookline page on Reddit, or I'm sure that there are Twitter accounts as well. What is, they're all issues.
Christina, do you know what the school committee, how the school department handles? Do you know what their social media?
I, I do know what their social media is unfortunately. I believe their communications officer or communication specialist last day was yesterday, that position unfortunately was cut. So I'm not sure what their, their plan is going forward. Um, but I, when I, when I did work with them, I know that, um, Neil Guca, who was the communication specialist, had, um, was managing the superintendent newsletter, much like I manage the TA newsletter, as well as the official town social media accounts, and he was a great partner. Um, and I would hope that going forward with that, however it looks in, in the new administration, that we could work together to have that, that, um, the outreach. I think the, the superintendent's newsletter was a, a great way to get information out for the, the pool who had a, a pool safety day, um, and different departments who, um, have, uh, kid focused events or sponsorships or grant programs or rec that they're able to reach out to that and, and they've done some reverse on that. Just to go back to the, the sort of comments, I actually appreciate getting tagged in posts so that I know what's being talked about. And I think that there is a, um, an argument to be made to being a part of that, but maybe not being actively posting on that. I think that it's great that I, I do believe that the, the DPW is a part of that and are able to at least see what's going on. And I think a few of us use that as a, an indicator of, okay, what information are we missing? What information are we not putting out there and how can we do that better? And so taking sort of the cue from the comments that we get, maybe not exactly those specific notes, but okay, there's a lot of questions about trash as, as we changed, uh, you know, trash collection provider. So if there's things like that that are coming up, hoping the DPW is able to say, yeah, we've updated our webpage, look here for what's changed. And really nothing actually has changed for, um, trash collection.
My worry there though is the potential for being drawn into more political discussions as opposed to focusing on the work at hand, because I think there should be a very clear delineation between, uh, the responsibilities as a staff person and not allowing the politics of a situation to perhaps impact the work that is being done. I think that's more what the select board is, is for, to make some of those political calculations. And I worry that if staff is being tagged on conversations of a political nature, at a minimum, at a subconscious level, I would think there is an influence that might have on the work that our employees then undertake. It might encourage employees to go in a different direction based on the narrative that they're seeing unfold on Facebook.
Okay. So with part of this policy that wasn't really implemented before, that gives me a little bit more oversight and enforcement is to get the list of authorized users, get the list of all the accounts and the passwords and that. So I'm available, I, I'm aware of all the different users and pa- and, um, who I need to be training and, and, and obviously we are, um, obviously, but we are going to be starting a monthly communications meeting, so all the different communicators that are in town. Um, and just making sure that we're, had an opportunity to talk about things if there are being comments made and it's affecting how things are going, best practices, if there's an account that needs some help in getting some engagement and things like that. And so just really creating, um, that synergy between all the different departments that have been siloed for so long and with my position. And after being here for a year and seeing how everything works, be able to sort of collaborate and just like we have department head meetings, having those communication, user meetings to make sure that we're all abiding by best practices and, and have an idea of what's going on. So that if we're getting tagged in things like that, we have us, we have a standard way that we discuss as a best practice to respond or not respond.
Yeah, because as I think you mentioned in, in the response of some of Michael's questions, or maybe Michael raised it, is, you know, if, if there is a message and there's an expectation by the public that you're going to respond and no one ever responds, right? I mean, there's a tremendous amount of content on, uh, these large groups that have seven, eight, nine thousand people that it's almost impossible to keep, to keep up with. And if, you know, there's, there's two, there's two things. There's a push method, which is the parks are closed because they're wet, or heads up, we're going to be paving Washington Square, you know, or the police department has to send out a message. You know, that could all be done through our alert system, which could have its own Facebook page on the townwide Facebook page. Here's the, here's the town's alert system. And you can always go to that and look at it and see what the most recent alert is and it's on the townwide Facebook page. Versus having 10 people have to post individual messages. That to me would be a more centralized stream for a push of information. Conversely, any type of feedback could be provided to that or another account, you know, for feedback. And again, it's, it's centralized versus, you know, 15, 20 people, um, having to think regularly to sit down and look at or monitor, uh, social media versus doing, you know, something else.
Michael?
I think the balance, um, to what you're talking about, Paul, uh, is the fact that uh, well, it's both helpful to have a place that you're in control of and monitoring. But it is also helpful for other kinds of push alerts, um, to actually go where there are people congregating.
Right.
So for example, if the, if we had the alert system and, and to continue with your example, the alert system had, you know, pushed all of its alerts onto a Facebook webpage that it controlled, a great strategy. It could also, as part of that protocol, simply just push all of those alerts to the town Facebook page.
Well, that's what I was saying. That, that was, that's.
Right, as, as a, as a central mechanism. And maybe all of the other, um, departments that are pushing would, would utilize that system as well.
Okay. So I need more time to think about this and I really, I appreciate, I mean, there's a lot of thinking that's gone into this. It would be, it would be helpful that maybe you have a, a follow up discussion.
So why don't we not go to this tonight and, uh, take it up at our next meeting?
Bernard, if I may, I just have one, uh, additional question. So in the materials provided, you define success as increased engagement with participants. But I think that ties into this very issue that we're discussing and I, I'm not sure I'm hearing quite yet that we would be okay with that as the definition of success in terms of level of interaction with participants. To me, that implies ongoing discussion between town staff and the community at large. Uh, unless I'm misunderstanding the example with the town clerk's office. Would you be looking at this as each office defines what success would look like? And then metrics are crafted from the department's own division, or would it be the same for everyone?
I, I think that there are different, um, different accounts for different purposes. For example, the, the Green Dog Twitter account, that's to notify whether the fields are open or closed for rain, for maintenance and things like that. That's not something that I think that, you know, to bring under that umbrella, and I think that serves that very niche, whether it's you're a Green Dog, uh, a resident or non-resident who comes and uses the, the Green Dog Fields in Brookline. I think that an example that I've talked to are, um, Cheryl Snyder, who is our emergency management coordinator, coordinator, deputy director, that, um, the OEM Facebook page has, I, the last time I checked, about less than 200 followers, so not getting that message out very well. Her department spans health and public safety, and so taking, um, taking those posts that she would normally do about public emergency preparedness, um, heat advisories, heat emergencies, and sharing those and giving those to the police and fire and health department pages to post on their pages and giving those information. And maybe it's, you know, emergency preparing, September's Emergency Preparedness Month and how to create a bug out bag and they're, or they're going to talk about that at the, uh, August, um, national night out, and so they're going to be there. And so being able to post on different platforms, and I think, once we get all those, um, content creators and social media users all together and be able to say, okay, we're gonna, you know, Cheryl has five posts for the month of July that she needs to put out. We have a, a new alert Brookline provider, so we've switched over and we're getting people signed up for that. So we're going to have police push out a, a notice, fire push out a notice and, and health in the town push out a notice all different times. And so she would come up with the same, uh, information and platform and be able to get it out there at maybe a different times and stagger that information so that's out there. And then that would create, um, and so if she has those platforms, we could also, we could shutter that Facebook account page so it doesn't stay stagnant. She, it's getting to followers, police, fire and public health have way more followers. Um, I don't know off the top of my head, I apologize, than the OEM page. And so really just taking advantage of that, like I think Michael said, consolidating what we need to consolidate, but, and getting down to that. Maybe we don't need 20 Twitter accounts or 14 Facebook pages, but really streamlining those that they provide the information that they need to each niche thing. And sometimes it's, I've heard the, you know, some people want to do just one town account, and I think that that's a lot for this person, you know, for one person to manage and to try to get all of that and coordinate that. So, yes.
So, because, so I, and I want to make sure my, my feedback is, is very targeted. So I'm, I, I'm good with individual departments having this connection to the community and followers, right? It's when it jumps into this large group, right? So we should be very, very thoughtful and intentional about how we enter into much larger groups like the townwide Facebook page or some other large social media group that, that would have an interest in what's going on within the town.
So your preference, excuse me, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but your preference would be, so I, I believe, you know, the town is not a member of the Brookline Town Discussion Page, but the DPW is. So you would rather that reverse than have anything?
I don't, I don't, I, well, I don't want to go, I don't, I don't want to go so far as to say what I prefer. I just know that if there were five, six, seven, 10 departments on the townwide Facebook page, I think that would be a bit much. If there was one, one or the two that are most frequently engaged, maybe. But, you know, we should just be intentional and clear about what the policy is around that. That's all.
I agree.
Yeah, right.
I, I, I also agree. First of all, thank you for, uh, all of this work that you've done thus far. And it, it seems like, um, and, and I would appreciate your feedback on this, that the policy that you've crafted is definitely an incremental improvement over what we currently have in place from 2017. So as, just as a matter of incremental progress, I think it's, it's worth putting in place. But I, but I also sense that there is more work to be done from a policy perspective in terms of addressing these, these issues that we've raised here. And I'm just not sure whether it would be most helpful to you to establish the policies that you've put forward and then continue to extend them or to, for us as a, as a, um, in one fell swoop to, um, consider these other issues and then incorporate them into, uh, a further revision of this, uh, version of the policy.
Of course, I would like the policies to be passed tonight. Um, but I understand the, the, the need to just sit and think about it a little bit more. I think that, you know, communications is a living, breathing thing. Things change from month to month, day to day. And so what I would say is that I think, you know, that could be a sort of underlying, just once we have those communication team meetings of, okay, this is what we're going to do and, and, and be able to find out, okay, who's a part of those, because there's a web to, to ask everybody, okay, are you a part of this? And sometimes you can see, sometimes you can't see who, um, are members of that. So I don't, I, I can tell you, I, besides DPW, I don't know, um, of town departments who have commented. I do follow that. I follow other different social media accounts to see, um, who is responding to different things. And it's usually their own accounts. I don't think that we, um, most people do not want to go into the Brookline Discussion Group for one reason or another. So, um, I think that that's easy enough to put into place to say, if you're going to respond to that, make it informational only. Don't, you know, again, don't start a public forum or can respond to the person saying, hey, there's more information on the website. If you need more, you know, if you want to discuss this further, contact the DPW at such and such a phone number and take the conversation offline through email or through phone.
Sean? John?
I just want to draw a distinction that I hope is a useful one. Because we've been talking about a social media policy. And I think what we also need to talk about, or at least be thinking about, is a social media strategy. You know, to me, the real sort of rubber meets the road part of this discussion is how effective are all these 20, you know, accounts at actually attracting people and getting information out? And the wonderful thing about social media is you can really measure a lot. You know, you know that, you said it yourself, the police and the fire departments have much larger followings than most of the other Brookline-related accounts and than my personal account. I mean, if anybody wants to discover for themselves how hard it is to attract a social media following, start a social media account and see if anybody follows you or how many people follow you. And I think our strategy needs to be effective use of social media to communicate important news to the people who need to see it and need to come across it and need to share it with other people. And we've got, I think we have available to us a lot of different ways that we can measure that. And there's also a lot of, I'm not telling you anything you don't already know. You know, there's also a lot of thinking that goes on about this very subject. And municipalities kind of talk to each other about what works for you and what doesn't work for you. And it sounds like we're very much a part of those discussions. And I do hope that we'll apply some pretty rigorous standards of performance to our social media accounts. Because there's nothing sort of more useless than a social media account that isn't being seen by more than a handful of people once a month. And in fact, it can actually dilute, you know, your effectiveness. Because people don't know whether to go to that account for news or to some other account for news. So I do hope we keep strategy in mind as well as just our policy.
The town does have a Hootsuite account, but not all of, again, I don't have all of the passwords and account accesses. So if we get that and I can upload those information to there, again, I wouldn't be posting, but that would be able to allow me to track and share those insights and say, okay, you know, when you're doing video and reels, you're getting way more engagement and way more likes versus static posts. And static posts have their place in time. There's also, you know, the algorithms on Instagram change and so keeping up with that. And so I don't expect, you know, the DPW social media person or the town clerk to be keeping up with social media trends. That's my job to inform them. And so having those communications meetings would be able to let them know, okay, this is what's going on. Here's how to implement this and training. We, for the Health Department's Public Health Fair, we had a, they usually just, they post their flyer of all their different events. And I had spoken with Darlene Johnson, who does their social media over there, and said, hey, let's try a carousel. Carousels get a little bit more interaction. You're going to have all the information on different posts. And the great thing about carousels, the algorithm right now is that if you're, they miss the first post in the feed, the algorithm feeds the second post into the feed again. So you get a second chance to miss it. So if you miss it the first time, if somebody scrolled through it and didn't go through the whole thing, it gets a second time. So you have a second shot at gaining their attention and getting them informed about what's going on. And I showed her how to do the carousel and she just ran wild with it and did an amazing job. And if you look back at the April posts for the Health Department, they're fantastic.
Right.
I just want to add that the Mass Municipal Association launched a group for communicators like Christina so that they can collaborate and learn what other communities are doing in terms of best practices.
Yeah, that's great.
And also I'm a part of an informal group that does, that meets monthly to talk about just sort of the different things going on. So I actually reached out to them regarding your question about Reddit and Blue Sky. And a lot of them, some are on Reddit, some have just had Blue Sky. I've heard your question about Reddit and Blue Sky. And a lot of them, I've heard your question about Reddit and Blue Sky. And a lot of them, some are on Reddit, some have just had Blue Sky accounts. But just to grab the name, but are not really active on it and vice versa. So it's, again, those emerging ones. And that's something that I would have to include it in your packet was, added this afternoon, was the IT's security sheet that they go through to make sure that it is. So like TikTok does not work for that right now. And again, and guidance from the federal government says that we shouldn't be using it right now. But I don't know if Blue Sky and/or Reddit are, you know, are one. So they would have to go through that before we would get any accounts like that. But I agree that, and again, I also want to stress that I want to make sure that of all these accounts that we're doing now, that we are doing them well and not expanding ourselves and spreading ourselves too thin.
Yeah, yeah, great.
Anything else? Okay, so thank you, Christina. And we'll take this up at our next meeting. I get the sense that that's what the board wants.
Okay, thank you so much.
I won't object, so I guess it is.
Thank you, Christina.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so let's go back to the first item on our main agenda, which is the noise bylaw, excuse me, noise bylaw waiver for the high schools. Is Lapian in the audience here?
I am here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, let me save it. I'm having a little trouble with my video. I don't know if you can see me, but I do have.
Like, so no need to put it on.
All right, I'm going to, I'm going to share my screen with this short presentation. Hopefully afterwards, if you have any questions, be more than happy to ask. Can you guys see my screen?
Yep.
Okay, so this is the Brookline High School Tunnel Project, which is, we call it the tunnel because it goes into the basement level of this long corridor, which it looks like a tunnel. So the location is the high school on the Greenall Street. It is, there's two scopes of work. There's the inside work, which is the tunnel, it has some pictures showing why we need to do it. It's outside work, which is the root cause of why we're having some problems inside the school. So right now, this is a picture of what it looked like before we started construction. We built the containment area because there is some asbestos material and we're containing it. So it doesn't get into the air and we can dispose of it properly. The root cause of why we have the issues is that the concrete here wasn't pitched correctly. So the water is draining on into the sides and it's affecting the concrete that's inside. It's spalding concrete and I'll have pictures showing why it's so bad. It was also never waterproof properly, the foundation walls, so the water is seeping through. And again, the next picture will show you how bad it is. So as you can see, what's happening is the water is seeping through. It's spalding concrete, the rebar is being exposed. You can see the rebar is rusted over many, many, many years of exposures to water. And this is why we have to patch it and they'll measure the structural engineer. It says it's okay for now, but we need to take some actions shortly. Going to the next picture, this is the actual tunnel itself. So you can see this is the area where transitions from the old school to the new school. Concrete is spalding, it's breaking apart. Part of the scope of work is we have to take down all these pipes. The school is shut down, so no one can use it. Because once we take these pipes down, there is no air conditioning. There is no potable water coming into the school. So we take these pipes down, we patch, repair all this. They're setting up the scaffold right now to start the work soon. So this is on the inside, they're tearing up the concrete, getting ready for, getting ready for the repaving of it so that it drains and pitches off correctly. They're also tearing the concrete out. So we're going to properly apply the waterproofing vapor barrier so the water does not seep into the high school. A little bit more picture of what's going on here. Again, they're tearing up the concrete. This, I took this picture today, so this is the status of the work today. So we are requesting a waiver because it's very time sensitive. We have to finish the work by August 15th. We fill the system, make sure the water, the HVAC works. And it's weather dependent. We're outside, we're pouring concrete. We're having some nice weather recently, but it could rain, it could get kind of crappy. And we don't pour concrete when it's crappy because it'll be bad concrete. Therefore, we're requesting a noise waiver on the following Saturdays. We're not requesting it this July 4th weekend because no one's going to work July 4th anyway. We're going to be, we requested waivers on July 12th, 19th and the 26th of July. We may or may not use it, but if we do use it, I would like to have this in my back pocket so that we can do the work without going back to the select board every single weekend. The work would, that would make a lot of noise, jackhammering and pouring the new concrete sidewalk. So with that, I'm ready for any questions you may have.
Any questions from the select board before we start the public hearing?
Paul?
I have one, just one quick question. Thanks, Lap. I really appreciate the pictures. You came before us a while ago for another noise waiver by law, I think for the roof. Are these things overlapping?
They are overlapping, yes. That's a separate project. That's a Charlie Simmons project. That's part of the CIS program.
Same building, same location?
Same building, yes. Actually, Charlie and I have had to coordinate to make sure that we don't get in each other's way.
Okay, does his noise bylaw waiver that we gave him cover this? Wouldn't it cover this?
I'm not sure. You know, I actually should have asked Charlie. I'm not exactly sure, but we're asking for Saturdays specifically, you know, starting at early.
Thank you.
Could you specify how early?
Seven AM starting.
John?
This is not a noise question, but it's a question that sort of needs to be asked. Was the contractor involved in work in that area of the building responsible for this issue? And if so, are we seeking any kind of compensation for work that was not properly done?
The best of my knowledge, the contractor was not involved in the original design or construction of the building. This has been going on for decades. So, I mean, not decades, but you know, at least decade. That's an accumulative effect of the spalding concrete and the rusted rebar.
Well, the drainage issues you said were improperly designed and the water was running where it shouldn't be running. I was actually on the committee of seven that launched this. And we did do a thorough tour of what I just called the basement of the high school to see the damage. And also the tour, the area under the archway leading into the courtyard where it was suspected that the water was seeping in. And that area, the courtyard, had a complete renovation, didn't it? And I was wondering if the entrance to the courtyard was also tied into that project.
That was before my times, sir, and I really can't speak to that issue.
Yeah, I mean, it was one of the last days that Tony Quigley was still on the job. But, I mean, did any of this get discussed in the handoff?
I was not aware of this, no.
In terms of outreach to a Butters, I see in our materials that there are essentially two notices. One of them is the noise ordinance waiver request, which doesn't mention the 7:00 AM time, just the date. And then the other one from East Coast Masonry and Restoration, which does mention 7:00 AM and who to contact. Which notice went out to Butters? Was it both?
The flyer went out to the Butters. The East Coast Masonry flyer went out to the Butters.
Okay, any other questions? Let's open it up to a public, or to a public hearing?
Sure, this is a public hearing. If you'd like to speak, please use the hand raise feature if you're online or raise your hand if you're in the audience and you'd like to speak. We have 17 participants online. Again, please use the hand raise feature online. Press the raise hand button if you'd like to speak at this public hearing. It seems like, Bernard, there is no one interested in speaking.
Okay, so let's close the public hearing. And if there are any other questions from the select board, unless there are any other questions, we'll take a vote. Any other questions? I don't see any hands raised, so I move approval of the noise bylaw waiver for the high school project that is described by Lapian. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Scoyac?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
David Furman?
Aye.
Michael Rubenstein?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you, Lap.
Thank you very much, Chair. Have a great night.
Thank you, you too. Next item on the agenda is the interim Public Health and Human Services Director. Question of appointing Dr. John Kleschinsky as interim Health and Human Services Director as recommended by the town administrator and vice gal Reese, I understand. So is someone going to talk about Dr. Kleschinsky?
Sure, Bernard, I'm covering in CHAZ's absence. So we are recommending that John be made interim health director. And I can tell you that, you know, we are very fortunate to have someone of John's experience in the succession plan. He's extremely talented. He's done a lot of great work with the CHIP, the Health Improvement Plan and working on cannabis issues and other public policy issues. And Segal is very confident that John is able to take this role and really do really great work for the town. He joined the town in 2021. You have his resume in the packet. And just, you know, by the experience of recruiting public health directors in the past, I can say this seems like a very easy fit for the town. And we recommend that the board appoint him as interim health director.
Okay, it's very great, it's very good that we have someone in the pipeline to move into the position when it opens up. Someone who knows us, knows the issues of the department, et cetera. So we're lucky. We lucked out, we're losing someone that did a great job, but we're getting someone who's going to do a great job in the future. Any questions, comments from the select board, Paul?
Yeah, just one quick one. So is this, so we're going to fill this in an interim basis and then do a search for?
So CHAZ will line out his plans for how he plans on filling the position. I think we'll see how the interim role goes and then we'll make a decision about the recruitment going forward.
John, did you have your hand up?
I did, I did. Thank you very much. I want to just second everything Melissa said. I've had the pleasure of experiencing John in meetings, you know, where he was a featured presenter, whether it be of data on, you know, marijuana use among kids or any number of subjects. And I know that he is enthusiastically endorsed by people from the Advisory Committee Council on Public Health. I just want to know, are they involved in any kind of a formal way in, you know, on an occasion such as this, when an interim director is being appointed in the department? Are they consulted and do we have some sort of measure of, you know, their take on this? They don't have the authority to actually approve the appointment, but they are a very experienced group of people who I would rely on. And I'm wondering if we're making sure to consult with them.
So for the interim, I believe, I think that they are aware, but we can confirm that. But in terms of a permanent director, they would likely be part of the group that CHAZ consults as he is making his decision on who to recommend for permanent appointment.
Great.
Sorry, I was muted. Any other questions from the select board? Okay, I move approval then of the appointment of Dr. John Kleschinsky as interim Health and Human Services Director as recommended by the town administrator. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Scoyac?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
Furman?
Aye.
Michael Rubenstein?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Great. If he's in the audience, welcome aboard. Whatever. Okay, boards and commissions interviews. We're starting off with the Park and Recreation Commission. And the first person on the agenda is Emily Jacobson. Is she around?
She's here.
Okay. Emily? Emily, uh please introduce yourself and uh tell us why you're interested in being member of the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Hi, good evening. Uh my name's Emily Jacobson. I'm a resident of precinct five. I think they just changed the borders. I'm never sure if it's four or five. It's over.
Yeah, lean into the microphone. Yeah.
Already very close to it. You're hearing me fine?
Yeah.
Okay. Um and uh I'm interested in serving on the Parks and Recreation Recreation Commission. Uh I really feel that Brookline's parks are something that I think everybody has something that they feel makes Brookline unique. And to me, it's really the parks. When I first moved here, uh it was just before the pandemic and um during the pandemic, we were constantly walking in the Olmsted Park and I think it was just a real lifesaver for me. And I'd like to um help protect that and promote that. And I also understand that the commission finds it val valuable to have people who are um familiar both with the design review process and also with the construct construction process in general from like a broad point of view. So I hold a bachelor's and master's in civil engineering and I work in structural engineering. So I'm quite familiar with the design review process um from the consultant side of the table. Um but also having served on design review committees here in Brookline, the served on the Davis Footpath, Davis Bridge. Davis Footpath Bridge Committee. And um so I'm familiar with that process from both sides and um understand that they find that valuable. So if I can contribute that, that would be great.
Okay, um if if you, I I take it you've attended meetings of the Parks and Recreation Commission. Do you have any comments or thoughts about the how it functions?
It seems to function in a very professional way and um the last committee, the last meeting meeting that I went to was kind of an overview of all the projects that um that they were having through this capital improvement cycle. The staff were um really motivated and um yeah, there's just a lot of interesting projects that they have in the pipeline.
And you answered my other question regarding your professional background. Relevance. Any other questions from the select board?
John?
John?
Thank thanks very much. Thank you very much, Emily. Um it's it's good to see all the applicants that we've got coming before us on this position. Um so um now correct me if I'm wrong, but I think bicycle and I don't, I'm not saying that there is any um set rule that, you know, we don't want people to be on more this commission and that board. We want them to be on one or the other. But um we, you know, we are trying to spread around as much as possible, these opportunities to serve on boards and commissions. Would you be giving up your position on the bicycle advisory committee if you take a position on the Park and Rec Commission?
No, I I wouldn't. Uh when I spoke with the the chair of the committee, she indicated that she wasn't looking for me to give up my position on that committee. I'm the chair of that committee and I was just recently selected as the chair of that committee, so I don't want to throw them under the bus, so to
Yeah, yeah. Okay, just I should ask.
Paul?
Thanks. Thank you, Emily. Um do you uh so I appreciate your background and and um I've watched you in action on the bicycle advisory committee. I appreciate your work there. Can you talk maybe a couple of things that you think um we should be doing with uh on on Park and Rec? I mean, they have a they have a broad set of responsibilities, right? They cover not only design reviews for park upgrades, uh but they're also setting policy for programs. Um you know, and 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 things of that nature. Can you talk about, you know, your thoughts on a couple of things that you think would be important that you'd like to see done is on Park and Rec?
Well, I think one thing that's really important is um like accessibility of the parks, especially in North Brookline. Um we have a lot of really great parks in North Brookline, but um of course, they're also the most densely used. And so I think any opportunity that there is for um for Parks and Recreation to um you know, either uh create uh these temporary parks or um upgrade uh existing facilities in North Brookline is really, really important. And I think also the other part of that is the huge importance of the very, some very small parks that we have. Um like there's one just over on Route nine, um near the fire station. Um and uh it's a super important place just from the point of view of, you know, people's experience of of the town, shade, trees and stuff like that.
Great. Um any other questions?
Yes, I have a question. You talk about in your application uh the importance of making our parks accessible to all ages, groups, demographics, et cetera. Uh do you have any concrete examples of what you would like to see in our parks to improve accessibility?
Well, I think in terms of accessibility, um like the legal definition of accessibility, I I did see that when they're redoing the parks um that they are following ADA rules. I think it would be great if they also followed proag rules. So that's um it's kind of enhanced um rules for um accessibility of of um the pedestrian experience, right? Um and um I think it's also something where you have to be really careful that everybody is able to experience the park in an equitable way. So um making sure that, you know, walk walkways are not sort of um more difficult walkways or a roundabout ways that people that have uh mobility needs can go and experience the park in the same way. That was something that came up on Davis Footpath. For example, there was a big question about uh how to get, because there were a bunch of different levels. And so there were big questions about how to get people who in wheelchairs down to the level of the park and also over to the playground area. And um it's just very important to to uh to safeguard that idea of equitable access.
Thank you.
So uh one other, actually two other questions, uh and I promise I'm gonna ask these same questions about all of the other candidates for this position. Um one of the major decisions that the Park Rec Commission made within the past year, if not the major decision, uh just in terms of its impact, was to uh address the problems with the ice rink at Lars Anderson Park um in a way that keeps the ice rink um in its current site and also keeps it um an open air ice rink. Um and um in implied in all of that um is that uh the the decision was not to go with an indoor facility um that would be, you know, used much more during the year and um much more weather protected for the sake of um advancing uh much, much more opportunities for hockey um leagues to use the facility. Um did you agree with that decision? That's question number one. And question number two is, do you have any ideas that you want to bring forward as to uses of the golf course?
Uses of the golf course? I don't have any ideas that I want to bring forward for
Okay.
of the golf.
Yeah.
With respect to the the ice skating rink, I understand um that the the towns uh like the the town has significant budget constraints. Um and I suppose if I were on the Parks and Recreation Commission, I would feel that I would be able to speak from the point of view of users of parks. Um but I think the decision to build a whole indoor ice rink is something that really needs like a collective decision of the town because it's a big expenditure. So.
Okay, thanks.
What I would feel about it.
Thanks.
Hey, great. Um thank you, uh Emily Jacobson, and we appreciate your applying to the uh Park and Recreation Commission. And uh we will uh be appointing people at a later meeting.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Yes. Uh next, um we have um Sarah Schlossberg.
Sarah is online. Sarah, you've been promoted. Yes, there you go. You can share your video.
Hello. So please introduce yourself and tell us why you're interested in the Park and Recreation Commission and what you would bring to it.
Yes, definitely. So hi, everyone. My name is Sarah. I just graduated from Wesleyan University where I studied applied design in society. And that was a self-designed major that I created because I was really interested in studying the connection between humans and their physically designed environment. So it was kind of along the lines of what an urban planning or urban design major would have been at another school. My school just didn't offer that. I grew up in Brookline. I was raised in Brookline. I was a PSB student athlete and a lot of my fondest memories growing up just occurred at the parks and open spaces of Brookline with my friends, my family and my teammates. And so I'm really enthusiastic about this opportunity because it's an opportunity to give back to the community that really shaped me to be who I am today. Also, I think we're at a very interesting time right now, being post pandemic, where the pandemic really shed a light on the importance of parks in not only cultivating social interaction amongst a community where during the pandemic, that was really the only time where you could go outside and interact with people was at parks and at open spaces. Um and so I think that the pandemic really brought that to the forefront and created parks as this concept of a third place where everyone can go together and interact with each other. And I just think that that's such an amazing idea and concept, and I'm just really enthusiastic and passionate about that idea and thinking about how we can create the best parks to cultivate the strongest community bonds for Brookline. Also, with the broader issue of climate change, parks and open spaces hold a great potential to mitigate Brookline's impact in the broader climate change issue. So by implementing tactics like planting more trees to increase um the air quality, improving bike lane connectivity to reduce carbon emissions um and reduce traffic. Tactics such as that are really able to be implemented by parks and open spaces. And so for those two reasons, along with my passion that I developed through my time at Wesley and my studies and the projects that I've completed, I am just really excited about this opportunity to give back to a component of the community that really shaped me.
Great, thank you. So um you're a new uh recent graduate from college.
Yes.
You're younger than than those of us on the select board. Um give me some thoughts about your um use of how parks could be more useful to a younger crowd other than organized sports use.
Definitely. So I think that parks can be useful to a younger crowd by having not just sporting events that are occurring there, but different recreational activities that incorporate features of the parks into their programming. So for example, because not everybody likes to do sports and not everybody likes to run around in order to interact with other people socially. So one example of that could be maybe there is a walking group or a birding club that attends these parks. And there are certain benches or certain points designated for these kinds of groups to use in their recreational activities. So for a walking group, maybe it's a specific path that this walking group follows and it's an accessible path that everybody can access equitably. And for a birding group or something of that nature, maybe there are specific benches or specific tables or there's posts where people write down their observations of what they saw that day. And then when they come back another day, they can see what other people observed. And so I think that it's small implementations of physical structures that can be utilized by not just people wanting to do athletics, but also people that are looking to just be outside and be with other people.
Great, thank you. Uh any other questions from the select board?
Michael?
Hello, Sarah. Um I'm wondering, uh have you attended uh meetings of the Park and Rec Commission?
I have not attended a meeting. However, I did read through the Open Space Recreation Plan. And from that, I feel I have a broad sense of the capital projects that the commission is working on right now. So one thing that I was very drawn to was the accessibility projects that the commission is planning on implementing over the next eight years. Those including the Hayes Playground Updates, the Boylston Street Playground Updates and the Griggs Park Updates. And those really stood out to me because I think that accessibility of playgrounds is extremely important because I think that everyone should have equitable access and be able to play so that no one can feel left out. And from the the plan that I read, I also gathered that thinking about climate change and Brookline's impact and how to mitigate Brookline's impact on that issue is one of the great overall things that the commission is thinking about right now. And so I think that the motions to increase the bike lane connectivity, especially connecting Brookline High School to South Brookline and South Brookline just to the rest of Brookline with bike lanes was really interesting and something that I would be really passionate about because I enjoy biking. However, I do feel as though the bike lanes could be improved, connecting South Brookline to the rest of Brookline. Because if there's a safe way to commute on bike from South Brookline out, um then that would not only reduce the carbon emissions of cars, but it would also just encourage more people to bike and to be outside, which I think would be a really positive thing. So while, no, I have not attended one of the meetings, I have read through the documents and the plans and I do feel I have a strong sense of the projects that are in progress and the direction that uh the town is going.
So my second question was my second question was going to be, what did you learn from that? But I think you have satisfactorily answered that question, so I'll yield.
I'm sorry.
Should I go? Should I go ahead?
I have a question. I'll wait for you.
Okay, thanks. Um so as I, as I said, uh when Emily was at the microphone, uh there are two questions that I'd like to ask all of the candidates um for this commission. And um so I'm asking you, um do you have a an opinion as to whether the Park and Rec Commission did the right thing with their decision on the skating, the ice rink, which um to sum it up quickly, uh was to basically keep an open air seasonal ice rink such as we have now, but one that is completely restored um in the place, in in the same place that the current one is situated. Um and not to go with a um much more substantial and expensive um indoor uh ice facility. Um do you agree with that? Second question is, do you have any ideas um as to uses of our golf course?
Yes. So for your first question, I would say that I do agree with that decision. I think it's a difficult decision to make because the economic factor of if the rink had been converted to an enclosed rink that could be used year round by hockey teams, that is certainly something to consider. However, I think that if the decision had been made in the other way where the town did decide to go with that enclosed rink, then what the town would have been losing is the character of an open air ice rink because I feel that an open air ice rink is a very different environment than an enclosed ice rink where one would bring economic opportunity in terms of teams renting it out. The open air ice rink acts more as a park and an open space. And so I think that by choosing to maintain and preserve that component of this landscape, it was the right decision to make because without it, the town would have been losing a park that is a recreational facility where people can go and relax and be outside and have it be more integrated into the overall Lars Anderson. go and relax and be outside and have it be more integrated into the overall Lars Anderson.
And the golf course?
Yes. And for the golf courses, uh, one idea that I had would be to potentially increase the amount of recreational activities that happen at the golf course. And perhaps it's not specifically golf, but maybe it's some form of mini golf or glow-in-the-dark golf or something that would attract youth participants, um, and obviously not over the entire golf course, but on a small segment of it, or maybe there's organized walking groups that go and utilize that land to walk around, kind of similar to um, my thoughts on what makes parks special and and athletics. Um, yeah.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Let me, let me ask a question, another question. Um, you mentioned accessible uh, playgrounds. I, I take it you've been to the Brookline Avenue Playground, which is an accessible play- playground we have here in Brookline. Um, maybe the question is, have you?
I actually am not a hundred, I'm from so I'm not a hundred percent sure if I've been to that playground. As growing up, I frequented the South Brookline.
Okay, well, just the last few years, um, the Brookline Avenue Playground has been made uh, much more accessible and inclusive. Um, but mainly uh, for younger kids, uh, elementary school children. Um, had, but, but you know, parks and, and even playgrounds are places that should be attractive to people, you know, of your age, for example. Um, any thoughts on how we address accessibility issues for for young adults uh, in, in our parks and, and playgrounds?
Definitely. So I think that accessibility in parks and playgrounds should be addressed by ensuring that there is something at the playground that every single person can access. And I think specifically for young adults, I think that there could be an increase in the amount of playgrounds or parks with athletic ability. So I know that at Downs Fields, there was that, uh, the new playground that was added on the side of the track, um, with that rock wall and um, those obstacle course pieces. Um, I think that is one great opportunity to possibly tweak a couple of things and improve the efficiency of that for young adults who are at the track exercising to maybe have a pull-up bar or some kind of outdoor elliptical machine I've seen at other parks. Um, and so I think that that could be a way to increase how young adults use parks and open spaces. Um, and then back to your question about how can parks be accessible to everyone, I think it really just comes back to making sure there is something that everyone can access and especially making sure that all of the paths and levels are connected in a way that a wheelchair could go up the paths, um, like a wheelchair swing. Um, so just making sure that there is a way for everybody to interact with the structure.
Great, thank you. Uh, unless there are any other questions, um, we'll, in the interview, uh, we will be making decisions on appointments to the Park and Recreation Commission at a later meeting. We appreciate your uh, application and uh, we appreciate uh, the information that you provided us and the ideas that you have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, uh, on the Park and Recreation interview, interviews is Raj Tonda.
Raj is in the room. He's approaching the podium now.
Okay, Raj, uh, please introduce yourself and tell us why you uh, want to be on the Park and Recreation Commission and what you'll bring to it.
Members of the Select Board, greetings. I'm applying for a position on the Parks and Recreation Commission because I'm passionate about the parks of Brookline and have the skill set necessary to make them more beautiful, friendly, and safer. My passion for making parks in Brookline more beautiful, safe, and friendly comes from my lifelong interest in gardening. It all began when I was fourteen years old and I took a course in botany. Since then, every opportunity I've had, I've been deeply engaged in creating, maintaining, and enhancing green spaces. Right. A, a good example of that is a very large garden around my house in Corridge Farm District. I'd also like to comment on the recreational aspect of various facilities in Brookline. Over the decades that I've lived in Brookline, my family and I have been active users of tennis courts, baseball fields, and golf courses, golf course. So we have a firsthand understanding of, of what could be made better, excuse me. And now about the skill set. I trained as a mechanical engineer. And as many of you know, I've operated businesses, executed development projects, which have given me the experience and understanding of negotiating contracts, executing plans. This could be very helpful for many things that the, the Parks and Recreation Commission uh, gets involved in. I'm passionate about open spaces. Uh, I have been careful to see that my development, thank you. Uh, my development projects did not encroach on any open spaces in Brookline. In this context, I want to say something about the golf course, the town-owned golf course. Um, I understand there's conversation going on, but my position is that it should remain an eighteen-hole golf course. Uh, if it becomes a nine-hole golf course, you'll see very dramatic drop in use revenue. And most golfers don't consider a nine-hole golf course, golf course as a real golf course. Um, and also, uh, if it goes to nine holes, uh, it, I'm assuming that the space that it'll really will be, not be open space anymore, whether there be development or whatever else happens. Uh, one other subject I'm quite knowledgeable in is dark skies, outdoor lighting issues. Uh, with my um, background in lighting, I believe I can be helpful in addressing that issue. Uh, in parks, park lighting, and even street lighting or new real estate projects, housing projects. Finally, I feel that a sincere efforts, sincere efforts need to be made to improve communications between the Parks Department personnel and the residents and users of the parks. On the user subject, I feel that there needs to be more clarity and enforcement, if you will, of some of the park uses. And I particularly refer to Emery Park, which is very near my house. And Boston University, it's, in my opinion, it's become de facto Boston University Park. I think it could be an opportunity to clarify all the rules and perhaps, perhaps even get some revenue for the town. So those are my thoughts, uh, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, uh, thank you. Uh, John, did you have your hand up?
I've got my hand up, yes. Thank you very much. Um, and Raj, thank you very much. Um, and I, I, I just want to add um, a note of thanks to uh, you and your family for all of the contributions you've made to Brookline over the years. It goes without saying that um, you've become a very important part of this community. And if people don't know what I'm talking about, they should look up. There are buildings um, that uh, we, we owe to you um, in Brookline and uh, uh, I'm, I'm very pleased that you're uh, applying for this position. Um, uh, and at the same time, you know, I want you to um, share with us your views as the other candidates did on whether the, the Park and Rec Commission uh, made the right decision with its decision on the ice rink. You've already answered the golf question, but how about the, the ice rink question?
I'm sorry.
The ice rink question.
Oh, ice rink question?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, I think it's not a good idea. And for the, following other reasons.
Uh, no, I'm sorry, but just clarify, uh, to, to, to go to a larger facility is not a good idea or?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, because obviously it'll take up more open space. Uh, the traffic and parking, all those issues that all day long, we talk about in any project, that would, they would even be more uh, prominent in that kind of, uh, and uh, so my position is that uh, I'm not in favor of, of that.
Thank you.
Uh, thanks Raj. Um, thank you, David. Thanks for coming. I um, I have a question about the Green Dog Program. As you know, Park and Rec is responsible for the Green Dog Program. Um, do you see any, uh, any opportunities for improving the Green Dog Program? Do you think it's working well? Um, we have a much increased pressure um, on, on our parks. Um, there may be BU uh, students coming to Emery Park, but there's also a hell of a lot of dogs going to Emery Park at all hours. Uh, what, what are your thoughts about the Green Dog? Should we continue it? Is there any modifications that need to be made? Any changes? How would you improve it?
Uh, uh, most dog owners prefer to uh, walk their dogs by part of necessity and preferences in the evenings. And so I would like to have some change, some idea explored whereby perhaps the morning program at Emery the um, is reduced instead of up to one o'clock, maybe it's up to eleven o'clock. Because I'm not sure much happens between eleven and one. And as long as there are some guidelines and provisions that the evening program does not affect the baseball games, the high school baseball happens there. Uh, so that would be one thing I would think.
So you would, so you would, you would extend it. Um, so one of the, one of the questions I have about this is, so you know, I have young children. And I too
Yeah, right.
Almost abut Emery Park. Um, my children have been attacked multiple times by dogs at Emery Park. Um, the, you know, the, the, the amount of scofflaws at Emery Park with leashes. So, you know, I, I, my children get out of school at, uh, you know, two thirty. I take them over to Emery Park around three o'clock. At three thirty, there's eight to ten dogs at Emery Park off-leash. Um, same group, same people, um, and they feel entitled that they should be able to do that. Um, one of them chased down my child on his bike, um, scared the heck out of him. So there's, 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 there's an inherent conflict that's developing with our parks. You, you raised BU students who I see playing volleyball and being healthy, which the last candidate spoke about the need for more things for, for that age group. Um, my children almost can't use Emery Park. They go sledding, dog attacks them. They go bike riding, dog attacks them. Um, the Green Dog Program in our parks are in great conflict uh, with uses. And I, 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 I don't think extending is the answer, Raj. Doesn't sound, doesn't sound like that's the solution.
Well, I would say that like any violation of rules by a person or dog, it should be uh, the appropriate action should be taken. If somebody, some dog is
Is your dog ever off-leash after uh, three o'clock at Emery or after two o'clock in the afternoon? Your dog's never off-leash at Emery?
I'm not gonna, never. But if there's nobody in the park, we might. But there's never
Does the Green Dog Program say you can have your dog off-leash after one o'clock as long as there's nobody else in the park? Or does it say that?
No.
You can't have, oh, let me finish. You can't have your dog off-leash after one o'clock, period, if you want to be a part of the Green Dog Program.
That's what it does say.
Does it say that if you consider your dog to be friendly and controllable, it can have their dog off-leash after, after uh, the Green Dog Hours? Or does it not say that?
It does not say.
Does not say that.
I, I understand what the
Thank you.
What the, uh, yes.
Michael.
Uh, thank you, Raj. Um, I just wanted to ask you the same questions that have been asked of the other candidates. Um, have you attended, uh, how many Parks and Rec Commission meetings have you attended recently?
Uh, online I have.
Online, online, okay. Um, and is there anything in particular that you've learned or uh, understood from those meetings that you think would be valuable to lift up or carry forward?
Uh, I'm not sure that I particularly learnt or didn't learn anything. It was, I watched, watched the meeting and I had some thoughts on uh, how the conversations went. Uh, but it felt to me, it was like any other meeting of that sort. Uh, so I can't say that uh, there was any specific learning. Uh, obviously I have attended hundreds of meetings over my career, so it, by itself, I didn't go to that meeting and say, let me see what I can learn from this meeting. If there was a subject of interest to me, I obviously would pay more attention to it. Uh, but uh, it was more out of curiosity. Uh, secondhand from time to time, I've learned what went on at those meetings from uh, other people. Uh, and yeah, I think that I'd have no issue with any meeting of that nature.
Thank you.
I, I guess the question is, um, uh, yeah, well, how, how, how did the meeting run, in your opinion? And did it run in such a way that the concerns that you had or the questions that you had um, got a good uh, hearing and uh, were useful for you?
Um, the meeting, the most critical meeting from my perspective, actually, I went to was in nineteen ninety-seven, I think. There was the issue of, uh, at the golf course, there used to be something called the inner club. And maybe you folks are not familiar with it, but it, what it was, was there was a group of people who have privileged uh, go, uh, reservation, reservation time. They weren't paying anything extra. Some of them weren't even, uh, the town resident, actually the president of the town. So at that time, I went to the board members who I knew. And they asked the commission to hold a meeting. It was a pretty intense meeting because the subject was of uh, incredible interest to uh, all the people who were in the uh, inner club, which was, the idea was that the inner club was going to be banned. And their meeting ended with that, exactly that happening. Um, that was probably the most um, meaningful meeting of the, the uh, Parks and Recreation Commission I went to. Uh, but uh, other than that, uh, I would think that the meetings run perfectly fine like any uh, meeting of that nature would. And there's conversation, there's agreement, disagreement, and eventually a decision is made.
Great. Thank you. Any other question?
Yes, I just have a question. You mentioned in your application how uh, you think you could come up with ways to generate more revenue from parks. And you referenced BU at Emery as, as one potential example. Do you have any other thoughts on revenue generation?
Um, the, the uh, thought I have is uh, some i- idea we need to come up with that a park like Emery Park, which is very close to Boston Boundary and wherein lots of use happens. and wherein lots of use happens by people who are not Brookline people or taxpayers. And they, we pay for the Green Dog tag. So in my opinion, it's not inappropriate that we come up with some idea that these folks who are different. The other day, I went to four volleyball games. I just nicely asked, do you folks have a have a permit? And they looked at me like, what do you mean permit? I think that certainly could be managed in a way, maybe, for example, there could be a fee to put a pole in the ground. That could be a formal way of saying you have a you have a permit. And you would be, I mean, if if you go there, it's too late now. But an hour earlier, if we had, if somebody had gone there and there'd be ten, twelve, eight, some number of volleyball games. And the town is getting nothing for it. I think somehow, I don't have a kind of a here's the exact plan. But I think it's something, we should certainly talk about it. And also, there's the social events that happen in one corner of the park. And I checked the other day and I was told by the Parks Department that they all have to pay a fee to have a social event. I challenge, I mean, I would be shocked if any of that fee is being paid. But they do leave us with a lot of trash and which means rodents and all that kind of stuff. So I think in a summary, I would say this. I don't have, nor did I intend to come and present any specific plan. But I do think that a real evaluation of how it could be managed so that the town, the it's more orderly and the town gets some revenue. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So, um, thank you for making your application to the Park and Recreation Commission. The select board will be selecting people for appointment at a later meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have another body, the Brookline Commission for the Arts, another commission. And Samuel King is the person who has made application for membership on the Commission for the Arts. Is he in the audience or online?
Yes, he's coming up to the podium, Bernard.
Good evening.
Good evening. So please introduce yourself and give us a sense of why you want to be on the Arts Commission and what you can bring to that body.
Of course. Well, good evening, and I'd like to start with offering an apology for missing last week's meeting. We did have a death death in the family, so I do apologize for wasting the board's time last week.
No worries.
This week. Well, uh, my name is Donovan King. Uh, my family has lived. Previously, we lived just outside of Brookline, a mere twenty feet from the Brookline Line when we first moved to Boston. And our lives, our social lives, everything we did was in Brookline. When we moved away briefly and had the opportunity to come back, there was no question that we would return as Brookline residents. I had the distinct pleasure to work for the Public Schools of Brookline in the enrollment office and the grants office for two and a half years. So I got to know this town very well as a participant in Brookline Arts Commission activities, festivals, by speaking to families at all levels and just by, you know, by living in Brookline and seeing the changes. After a year away, coming back, seeing the way art has exploded in public areas. It's incredibly encouraging and I would love to bring my knowledge and expertise, particularly in theater, but also having worked in live events, fine art museums, to the Arts Council and continue the wonderful work that's already being done.
Great, thank you. So, um, let's see, I had a, I did have a question. Do you have any ideas, I think in somewhere in your materials, you mentioned the schools and arts in the schools. Do you have any particular ideas of how we can use arts in the schools more effectively? And I sort of noticing that your wife is an opera singer, just to make this question a little harder. How would you incorporate opera into the schools in a way that helps to sort of give kids various skills or knowledge about themselves? You know, their emotions, whatever, right?
Uh, I think it's a very good question. Um, I've been able to work directly with arts in schools in my last position, living in Connecticut. Uh, I was in charge of the Stratford High School Drama Society. So I feel that when looking at arts in schools and how we can better utilize that in the town. One thing that I've had experience as as a high school student was getting arts theater, in this case, out of the school building and out into the public. There, the easiest way, and this is at any level, would be utilization of Shakespeare. That is something that there are no royalties to pay. There's no cost. It is entirely public domain. In Brookline, as has been discussed through the previous round of interviews for the Parks Commission, we have the best asset in the world for live theater, which are expansive parks with unique physical features that mean minimal sets, minimal staging, a little bit of sound. Kids love that opportunity to take something and make it more accessible. So I think you would utilize your school students, have a summer Shakespeare, focus on kids, non-professionals. You could even do a youth program, particularly with summer camps would be one of the easiest ways. You can usually put up the junior version of a show and a bridge Shakespeare within a week. It's very easy to get that done during the school year. Opera is tricky but not impossible, particularly if you stick with the more the romance languages. American opera is devilishly difficult, so stay away from that. But you gather the meaning, the intention, you have those lessons, you do the dramaturgy. You could definitely introduce that kind of music and opportunities through a scenes show, dessert theater, great fundraisers for individual school programs, or a larger scale public theater option.
Great, thank you. Paul?
Yep, uh, thank you for for coming this evening. I'm sorry for your loss, I can only say this to your family. So I, in your application, you mentioned neighborhood festivals and concert series and stuff. Could you, that's interesting. Could you speak, I hadn't really thought of associating with the the arts, but could you speak a little bit more about that and what your thoughts are? Oh, absolutely. I think Brookline to me is fascinating because in a such a small geographic area, you have such distinct neighborhoods, each with their own personality, to be informal, their own vibe. People make a choice to live in their neighborhood. And I feel that I've seen it with what Boston's done on a large scale with their their neighborhood festivals. I the I did the Alston Main Street with my family, I believe it was two years ago. And it was a lovely place with a primary road was shut down. Local vendors were able to come out and it generated much greater foot traffic for businesses on the route and then just off the routes. I think it would be easy to replicate this in Brookline utilizing a lot of the facilities and assets that I've seen for Brookline Day. Do it on a slightly smaller scale. Every neighborhood has at least one road, square, or park where you could set up a mobile stage with sound equipment, invite local bands to be able to perform, reach into the high schools, get dance teams, brass bands. You could get kids that play their own instruments to come out and provide entertainment. You could offer, depending on the area, a certain number of local artists, their booths to either demonstrate products or activities. You could offer performances on those same stages. And you do it, you find the central location for each given neighborhood, like, you know, you could find areas in South Brookline, Brookline Village, Coolidge Corner, Washington Square, those are the first ones that come to mind. Increase the bonding with neighbors, get you that familiarity, especially considering Brookline is such a transient community. We have so many people, so many families coming in and out every year throughout the year. It's an easy way to start making those bonds and make it more welcoming. And all of those those things are arts or arts related. And it's a great way to let people kind of get that opportunity to build professional connections and hopefully financially flourish. Thank you.
Great. Okay, I'll ask, uh, Mike, you have a question?
Yes, um, I just wanted to know if you have been to any meeting of the Brookline Arts Commission recently? And if you had any observations or things that you learned or has has been asked, things that you would particularly seek to improve?
Uh, I have not had the pleasure of attending one of the meetings. We've been back in Brookline, well, technically living in Brookline for the first time for only the last couple of months. So I I do not have, I cannot speak to that unfortunately.
Okay, so at last week's meeting, we appointed a new poet laureate, which is one of the functions of the Arts Commission. Do you have any thoughts on ideas for the poet laureate in the areas you mentioned in your application? I may, I may add that the town, the state's new poet laureate is Reggie Gibson, who has a long and deep connection to Brookline. But anyway.
Well, I I think that, I mean, I I do love the fact that Brookline has, that we have our own poet laureate. I think one area of performance art that is terribly underutilized is the art of the performance of poetry. Doing poetry readings. I think that with the number of public spaces we have, you could easily utilize town spaces to do effectively a town-sponsored open mic night. Especially if we could utilize the poet laureate there as an emcee, somebody to be able to have that opportunity and access to discuss the art form of poetry or performative reading. I think that's that's the first thing that comes to mind of how to best utilize that. And then even if we wanted to better integrate the schools, poetic writing, the competitions, displays, or short story competitions, either displaying them through public newsletter or offering a chance for students to read their work themselves, utilizing public auditorium like the Brookline High School could make it a lovely town event.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? If not, um, thank you for your application to the Brookline Commission for the Arts. And as I say with respect to all the applications, the select board will at a future meeting make appointments to this to this body. Thank you.
Thank you all for your time.
Okay, next. Mission, Mission Massachusetts, comma, Inc. Is Jonathan Simpson on, uh, either in person or on Zoom?
Jonathan is online and he has been promoted, so he can show his video and unmute when he's ready. And I'm not sure, but we think that Chris Wimmer on Zoom is with Mission. And I've promoted Chris in case he'd like to chime in as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So originally, we were going to take up a ruling by Judge Kratsley, who was a, um, an independent investigator that we hired to look at some of the issues associated with Mission and their ceasing business and whether that involved or entailed also the surrender of their license. Since that time, however, we hear that you have, speaking to Chris Wimmer, have filed or filed a motion for the appointment of a receiver, which was appointed, which sort of changes the nature of our deliberations here. And what I'd like to do is to have Jonathan Simpson, first of all, ask you a few questions to sort of give us a sense of, you know, where we are with respect to Mission, given the appointment of a receiver. And then the select board will, you know, discuss this in terms of where we go next. But Jonathan, could you sort of help us out here?
Sure thing. Thank you, Bernard. For the record, I'm Jonathan Simpson, First Assistant Town Counsel. Mr. Wimmer, uh, back in January, we received a letter from your council, uh, Mission's council at the time. And stating that that was. Stating that there there was a a transfer to an established operator was imminent, that you'd reached an agreement in principle with that party. What is the status of that transfer?
That transfer now is likely not viable because of the receivership and and just the passage of time. That was potency was the name of the potential purchaser. And and first, just let me say to the select board, thank you so much for the time this evening and for the time on prior evenings. I've been at the prior meetings and have appreciated the consideration you've given us at each turn.
Thank you.
Okay. So so, uh, Mr. Wimmer, is the, uh, is there, are you, I apologize. I I think I might have missed the beginning of the of the agenda item, but the, uh, are you are you able to to speak for the receiver in this matter? Or are 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 there another possibly another representative of them here at the meeting?
No, I'm sorry. We don't have a representative of the receiver here. I I can speak with authority for the company and the receiver is listening to what the company thinks should happen with a lot of these matters. So I think I can be an effective tunnel, although I can't speak authoritative tatively for them tonight.
And I apologize again, I I I was having trouble at the beginning of the of this agenda item. You are, when you say you can speak for the company, are you referencing Forefront or Mission?
So Forefront is the parent company of Mission MA, and so I can speak on behalf of both. I'm in-house counsel to both.
Excuse me one second. I'm sorry, Mr. Wimmer. So, uh, so, Mr. Wimmer, are, is it possible then, as you mentioned, if, uh, I don't, I'm not sure if you're aware of what's what's in the the receivership order, where have you reviewed that document?
Yes.
Okay. So, Mr. Wimmer, the, um, the, as you know, the the town operates with its marijuana establishments based not only on the parameters of the bylaws, but also through a host community agreement. In your experience, does, uh, is that host agreement, coast community agreement, does that survive the receivership?
I guess I haven't looked at that issue specifically, um, a lot. We we've been triaging a lot of issues, so I can certainly look at that and and get back to you by tomorrow.
Okay, I I think in even to sort of go up, go above and beyond that, Mr. Wimmer. There there is a, uh, a paragraph in the receivership order that states that agreements are, the receiver is not bound by agreements. Well, it is of course bound by. receiver is not bound by agreements. While it is, of course, bound by statutes and regulations, it's not bound by agreements, unless it, it affirms in writing that it is. So to the extent you are following up as soon as tomorrow, which we would appreciate, we would appreciate that affirmation in writing from the receiver that you will continue to be bound by the host community agreement. As you know, it is a, not just a, an agreement. In this case, it's actually a regulatory requirement, and we just want to make things unambiguous to, to, to Mission and to the receiver, that that host community agreement does still need to stay in place.
Yeah, I absolutely understand that. I believe the receiver does too. They see this, this is our local license, right? It's our local authorization to operate. Without it, we cannot operate. But I will speak to them. I do have a meeting with them set for tomorrow, and I'll make sure that they understand you'd like to see in writing an affirmation of that agreement.
Great. So we received a letter from James McMullin last Friday, and that letter stated that Mission was going to continue operations through the receivership. What does that mean to you? Or what does that mean for Mission to continue operations?
So Mission MA Inc. also has a location in Worcester. This is, what you received was a form letter sent to all our host communities stating the, the exact same thing. We continue to continue operating as normal. Obviously, we do not have a currently active location in Brookline. That is the entire topic of our ongoing discussion, which again, I appreciate the board engaging in. So we certainly didn't mean to suggest that anything other than what are the current facts.
Okay. Okay. So as, as you may know, we, the town believes that there is an issue with claiming you are continuing operations, but not having a working storefront in Brookline.
Understood.
So we, we would then appreciate, and any idea you can give us at this time, or if you want to follow up, do you have any idea of the timeline when, that the receiver is going to be working under to get this license in a, in a way into a, into the hands of someone who would be able to continue to reopen the business?
So the receiver, as you saw from the order, has 45 days to prepare an initial report. That's the initial period during which they assess the business, both in Massachusetts and Illinois, and to the extent we've got contracts in Washington. And then, you know, put together a report. They have been working busily on incoming inquiries, that, you know, we have inquiries interested in the sale of all our Massachusetts operations as a whole, or perhaps just our Massachusetts retail. And so they are, you know, discussing with these potential purchasers, and then there will be a sale process. I don't control and so don't know how quickly that sale process will happen, but it's on the order of months. You know, it's on the order of three to six months, I think, is the goal to have it complete. And so I would expect the sale process to start within a couple of months here, but I can get you a, a firmer idea after a meeting with the receiver tomorrow.
Okay, that would be, that would be much appreciated. But to your understanding, the ultimate, the, the receiver's role in this is to sort of liquidate the assets, including the license, and that would mean a tran, sale effectively, or transfer of the license to someone else?
Subject to regulatory approval at all levels, right? We, we understand well, we need each town's approval, we need the CCC's approval for any sort of transfer or change of location. But the receiver's role, and I'm sorry for the, the siren if you're hearing that, the receiver's role is to get the businesses in order for sale. The intent is to sell them as going concerns as operated, because we do have good, strong operations. We just had too much debt at the corporate level. And again, acknowledging that we are not currently operating in Brooklyn.
So I want to speak to that, the Brookline situation, as I understand it. You probably know more than I do. The, the, my understanding from speaking to your representatives in the past was not that it was a debt issue at the corporate level, it was an issue with your landlord at that particular location. What is, what is the status of your agreement there? Have you received any breaks on the rent? Do they, are they, they had, they had sent us a letter as well at one point stating their belief that the mission should be allowed to transfer that license, but I believe they were referring to that previous agreement in principle that you said is not viable anymore.
Right. So the issues we had with our Brookline location is a flavor of what happened nationwide. I don't know how, well, you know, the cannabis industry, but landlords charge extremely high rents for buildings when they see cannabis, because they falsely assume that cannabis businesses are making a ton of money, which they are not. So that was an underlying problem there. That and the opening of the other dispensary directly next door to us, and them selling at very low prices absolutely killed that location. It went from being a very profitable location, turning about $200,000 a month net, to a money loser over the course of a year or so as a result of that. Now, that coupled with the debt at the corporate level, which sits on all of our subsidiaries, because if you're going to borrow, you've got to borrow on behalf of your whole enterprise. Those are the combined things that caused the problem. With respect to the landlord, they have served notice of termination of that lease. They have not been able to find a new tenant. We've been in communication with them, not about anything specific, because there isn't anything specific going on, but just staying in touch. We do have a good relationship with them, and I do believe that they would be interested in seeing another dispensary open, either a Mission dispensary under a different owner, or perhaps a new license entirely. And again, understanding that it all has to be subject to town approval.
Certainly. So are you, you aware that the, in Brookline, we, you mentioned the town approval, a part of the town approval is a special permit that is, that runs with the land at that site? So we, we are sort of, you can, you can understand our, our concern here is that if the landlord has served you a notice to terminate, hopefully they'd be interested in having another marijuana retailer on site. But if they're not, there is a significant barrier to entry to anyone who's attempting to obtain that license. I just want to, you know, I don't, I, I'm not, like you said, like, I'm not part of the cannabis industry. I'm aware of how we do it in Brookline. My concern there is that to the extent the receiver is hoping to sell these as a going concern, that that may hold up a sale. Is, are you, does the receiver know about that special permit situation here in Brookline?
So the receiver has handled other Massachusetts cannabis receiverships, is extremely experienced as an operator. So while I haven't discussed them with, this with them specifically, I'm sure they're familiar with the local zoning and permitting requirements that frequently occur. And I, I, I mean, to be, to be blunt, I don't know that anybody thinks this is a high value proposition, whatever it is we have, because of the situation with the town and the questions around our license, and whether we even have a license anymore. I think everyone's very aware that it would require the active cooperation of the landlord, the town, the future purchaser to work through the, what is a clearly very complicated situation.
You mentioned that they have expertise. They, this receiver has actually done cannabis businesses, has been a receiver for those in the past?
Yes, a number of them. And in fact, the way they started initially was as a consulting group to help cannabis businesses operate. And then as, you know, the industry matured, it largely became about helping them work through receiverships on the other side.
Okay, interesting. Okay, so my, my last question, Mr. Wimmer, is we've, we've been in contact with the CCC intermittently throughout this process. And our latest communication with them, we had inquired about the Mission license that they held for this, the Commonwealth Avenue location. And we were told that Mission was still, had asked for an extension in order to obtain a host community agreement. Are you, I don't know if you helped prepare that application at all or anything, but if you could help us understand what, what the company meant by trying to obtain a host community agreement?
That would be with Worcester. Again, Mission MA holds two licenses, one for Brookline, at the state level, and also that same entity holds a license in Worcester. And so I expect that had to do with getting the application for Worcester, the HCA in place for Worcester. I don't think it had anything to do with the Brookline license.
But we, we referenced it, you could be right. But we referenced it by license numbers. Isn't the license, so?
I, I believe there's one license, I, I, and I'm sorry if it's incorrect here, but I was in the impression that one license number encompassed both locations. If that's not correct, I'll, I will just have to go back, check with my compliance department. I didn't, I didn't handle that application directly.
So if you could check with the compliance department, you, our concern here is that, as you know, we're in a complicated kind of uncharted territory with respect to the Mission license, but we certainly don't want to give anyone the impression that the proper step for Mission is to now seek a new host community agreement with the town. We think that would be problematic on a number of levels. So to the extent you're representing to the CCC that that's what you're doing, we are not enter, we are not in the market of entering into a new host agreement, host community agreement with Mission at this time.
No, that's understood. I, I don't think that was, I, I certain that was not the intent behind the compliance department. Again, the, with the HCA extensions, it was likely a form letter that was done for each of the entities, because we have not only Mission MA, we have Healthy Farms, Inc., which sits in Georgetown, we have New England Cannabis Corp., which sits in Holliston. So i- if that was, if it was written that way, it was likely as a result of a form letter. But again, I'm happy to go clarify that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wimmer. Bernard, I don't have any other questions right, right?
Okay, any discussion from the Select Board on, on this issue? Michael, you have your hand up?
I, I do have a question, Bernard.
Okay, Paul.
Thanks. So I just wanted to be clear about what I heard about the operations in Brookline. So Mission does not have an ongoing operation in Brookline, correct?
No, we, we don't have a store. We sure would like to reopen the, the store we have, either under a mission or someone else. But no, we do not have a store operating.
Okay, but you do have, you still have control of the site? You have a lease?
We, our lease has been terminated according to the landlord. Again, they've expressed interest in us reopening there, if we're able to get things sorted out, or having another dispensary open there.
But you don't, you don't have a lease?
No, sir. No.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Thanks. I have to say, I think, you know, speaking for myself, I, I find this very, very difficult to sort out. I, I'm going to guess that maybe some of the other members of the Select Board find it very difficult to sort out. I just want to return to what I think is the fundamental issue here, and that is that we had certain conditions that were written into our agreements, not with, just with this particular cannabis retailer, but with all of the operators in town. And, you know, among those understandings was an understanding as to what might trigger the return of a license to the town. It's an important issue because we, we've, we've not fully satisfied, you know, a goal of all of this, that there be some equity in terms of licensing operations that are not just owned, owned by sort of majority, majority, majority non, majority white ownership. Sorry to use that very, you know, bold sort of phrase, but, you know, we want this to be open to all. We want there to be equity in who gets licensed in Brookline. And so the return of a license is, is a potential opportunity. That's all I'm going to say about it. It's a potential opportunity. We need to know if we are in a position right now to require, or at least to, in fact, assume that the license is subject to return to the town. And the only person I can count on to give us good advice on that right now, because I don't consider it to be a judgment call on my part, is, is our town council. And Jonathan Simpson is working really hard on this and knows the details of this better than I do. And so, John, you know, I'm just going to wait until you're ready to give us clear advice as to what our rights are in this situation and how we should exercise them.
Michael's a question.
Um, to be really specific to follow up what John is asking, I guess the question for our council is whether or not the town believes that, given, given what Mr. Wimmer has said, and the information you've now received, as to whether or not Mission is in violation of either the, the host community agreement, or in violation of their license, given that they do not have an ongoing concern at the aforementioned address?
I think that there is no question, especially given what we've just learned, that they do not even, that their lease has now been terminated. I do believe, I, I do not believe that there is any interpretation of the relevant statute or host community agreement that could be interpreted to say that they are still in operation, and therefore I believe they are in violation of both. So that, but that only gets us so far, because the question then be, one thing we have not yet had to do is determine what the appropriate remedy is in that situation. Here, I think we have a situation where it is, there is at least a chance, according to Mr. Wimmer, that, that there may be a Mission branded, or a new Mission entity, when this is all said and done, that wants to try to reopen at that location. Because of, because that is, there, there is a possibility of that, I think that the board should at least consider that there may, the upside of allowing additional time to, to, to allowing a remedy short of revocation, because in that situation, it may behoove the town to, to allow what is effectively a, an in-company transfer with a lot of unfortunate middle steps, which is something that we have allowed in the past. A remedy in that case could be of any number of things. It could be a brief suspension once they reopen. It could be a suspension that they've effectively served. I think it is, but again, that is, I think at this point, I have not heard anything that would disabuse me of the notion that they have, the violation is clear, it's just a question of remedy.
May I just comment? I don't think we, I, I don't think we would disagree. We're not operating, or we lost our lease. I, I, you know, I don't think I would fight you on any part of that. And we're very much in favor of the social equity licensing. You may remember, we had a potential purchaser who was a social equity licensee. The only landlord in town, they said, who would consider renting to them was the place we're sitting, and they were not able to reach terms with that landlord. And that we, we, we've, we searched deep and wide to find purchasers, including social equity purchasers. So I do think the smoothest thing would be to give our receiver a little time to see if there's a way to, to transfer this as a going concern, because I don't think there are a large pool of people waiting for this license, even unfortunately, social equity applicants. But we absolutely defer to the town's judgment on all this. And again, I, I appreciate your patience with this.
Paul, that's a question. Do you have anyone, are you talking to anyone that could be a potential license holder?
We ran out of, we ran out. We, we canvassed everybody we could imagine, and, and including using brokers, and, and we've run out. So we do not have any other active individual licensees, although again, we have received inbound inquiries about purchasing all of our Massachusetts operations, either as a whole or as just retail, as part of the receipt.
Paul, do you have a question?
Yeah, thank, thank you, Bernard. And I, I, I appreciate the, the challenging situation that you find yourself in and how you're trying to manage and navigate through it. And I just want to make sure I understand the facts. Originally, we thought, you thought you had a social equity applicant, and they couldn't come to terms with the landlord, and then was a backup, a potential candidate. It sounds like that one has now fallen through. And so, and you're saying there's nobody in the pipeline. At this point, are you, are you, would you agree to return the license to the town of Brookline at this point?
So I can't do anything now without receiver approval. I will absolutely ask them tomorrow if, if they would just like to return the license.
I could just, I, I'm not going to speak for the board, but I, I can speak for myself. And it gets a little bit to what, what John was saying. I mean, there's been a long, someone's speaking over me on the Zoom.
I think it's Bernard coughing, I think.
Oh, it's, it wasn't Bernard, someone was talking. That, you know, we've, we appreciate you working with us. I think you've appreciated us working with you. It's been 10 months or so. We've tried a number of different avenues. We've, you know, had a third-party command to help adjudicate this thing. I, for myself, at this point, would be, you know, would be greatly appreciative to see the license come back to the town, so that we could go to the next steps with what, you know, we need to do. But the reason of what, what we want to do with it shouldn't be the reason for you to returning it. It should be that, you know, we've run this road pretty far. And I, it's, it just seems to me, in my opinion, it's time, you know, for that, that license to be returned. You don't have a lease, you're not operating. You yourself is saying there's really not value there. At this point, you can't find anybody. I, for one,
I, for one, would appreciate it being returned at this point.
Yep, well heard and totally reasonable. And I'll take that to the receiver tomorrow.
And, and get his view back to us, right?
Michael has a question.
Yes, Michael?
I, I realize that our next meeting is on July 15th. And I don't know whether the select board wants to continue operating on this. But it, given that, that we're fundamentally entering a negotiation now with the receiver and not with Mission, is there anything that we can do such as authorizing our council to negotiate on our behalf? Or some other tasks that can more rapidly cycle engagement with the receiver with the goal of getting the license back more quickly? Or is that, is that worth our time? And I'm just throwing that out to the rest of the select board or the council for their consideration.
I, I think it, I do not think it would be appropriate for me to take, to receive all of your authority with respect to this matter. But I do appreciate what Michael is saying. I think I would, I would be the one talking to the receiver most likely anyway. And I'm happy to try to work something out on the town's behalf. So to the extent you want to delegate me authority to do, to negotiate on your behalf, that's, that's, that's a good thing. But at the, you know, I would ultimately need to bring it back to you all. I think regardless of what, whether it was to accept the license back, as Paul was just saying, whether it was to oppose some other type of remedy, or whether it was to simply allow them, ultimately allow the transfer to the new entity.
Yeah, all we're asking is that you use your expertise and knowledge to identify, you know, what our options are, given the current situation with receivership. And, you know, we will make the decision.
Yeah, and I think that, and I think that this, what we've heard today, I don't, I would not counsel you to make any decision right now. This is, we have, we have.
You're not going to do that.
Different things that there is, that we've already heard the receiver needs to speak on to say nothing of, there's more things developing as we go.
Okay. Any other questions from the select board?
Bernard, yes.
Yeah, I agree that we're not really in a position to make any decision right now. But you have a question, John?
Just a quick one. I heard the phrase, you know, "all we're asking for is a little time." How much time is a little time?
I'm sorry.
I'm not, I'm not talking to John Simpson. I'm talking to the representative of the Mission.
Thank you. So again, the receiver has 45 days from appointment, which was the 20th. So we're already, you know, a good 15, 10 days into that. So within a month, there'll be a report from the receiver. But I absolutely can ask that we accelerate their consideration of this piece. You know, I will speak to them tomorrow. I will make an effort to get a response back to you this week. And they very well may just say, let's surrender the license and be done. But, you know, if you needed a hard deadline by the end of next week, but again, I'll really try to get you an answer this week. Believe me, I, while I've appreciated the opportunity to attend the meetings, I would like to be done with this issue as well.
Good, good.
By the way, what is the financial condition of your other operations? Like in Worcester and the other ones you mentioned?
So.
Are they facing similar financial problems?
Not at the individual facility level. Although the market in Massachusetts continues to tighten as more retail comes online. And generally, we're seeing declining revenues across the industry at each store location. Our wholesale, our wholesale division has grown quite strong. And so that piece of our cultivation is doing well. At out-of-state Illinois, we're doing much better. It has a lot to do with the limited number of licenses available.
Okay, that's interesting information. To suggest what the receiver may come back with, but we'll see. Any, any other questions from the select board?
It's, it's not a question, but I would endorse a version of Michael's proposal to authorize town council to speak with the receiver so that we're in a better position at our next meeting to understand the decisions before us.
Do we need to formally say that, vote that? Jonathan, you're muted.
I think it couldn't hurt if you want to delegate, you know, as David was saying.
Okay. We'll formalize it. Do you have a question, Paul?
No, I guess if someone's going to craft a motion, then I'll probably have a question about the wording of the motion. You know, how much, what authority are we delegating to Jonathan?
No, it's really not authority. We're just, I wouldn't call it delegating. Would you, Jonathan? I mean, we're saying, we're urging, we're asking town council to open up discussions with the receiver in order to identify for us some options for the select board to take. He has no power other than the power to figure out what the options are.
Well, I guess that the thing that, you know, John had spoken earlier about, it seemed like a desire to see this license come back to the town. I have a desire to see this license come back to the town for similar reasons that John has raised. I'd be curious about, to understand the will of the board about this license coming back. This thing's been sitting out there for 10 months now. Drip, drip, drip with, first we get an equity applicant, they fell through. We get another, another potential sale, they fell through. Now with the receiver. You know, I'd like Jonathan to go, go talk with the receiver and say, we'd like the license back. The board hasn't taken a formal action, but we'd like to see the license come back to the town.
That's delegating him the power to more than I think you want him to do. I mean.
Okay. What I'm saying, I'm just sharing you with you what I would like.
We don't, we don't need, you don't need to, you know, commit at this time to one way or the other, or one course or the other. Yeah, Jonathan, you know, is, I mean, I hate to use the word delegate because it's really not delegating anything. But we're directing him to talk to the receiver and see what options there are so that we can make a informed decision.
Okay.
Is that clear enough, John?
Michael?
I guess the question, the question that we have as a board is whether or not we want to add to that motion for the purposes of facilitating the return of a license back to the town of Brookline.
Well, facilitating, I mean, I don't want to be sort of tied into that. Facilitate the return of the license or other options that the select board can consider.
I, I agree with you, Bernard, because as mentioned by council for Mission, the receiver has 45 days since June 20th. We're already a significant way into that period. We don't meet again until July 15th. So I'm not sure that we have to be directing the outcome at this very moment rather than having a full exploration of the options with that particular one of having the license returned to us be explicitly articulated as something that we've discussed. But I don't think we want to be making the decision today.
Yeah. Okay, any objection to that approach? Okay, I move that we direct town council in the form of, in the person of Jonathan Simpson to discuss with the receiver for Mission and their affiliated companies the options that we have given the current situation and to bring those back to the select board for a decision. Is that a good enough motion? Okay, so I move approval of that motion. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Scoia?
Aye.
Michael, Paul Warren?
Aye.
David Perlman?
Aye.
Michael Rubenstein?
Aye.
And Chairboat's aye. Thank you, Chris Wimmer, and thank you, Jonathan Simpson. This is a difficult process, but, you know, we'll get through it.
Thank you all. I really appreciate your consideration. Have a great evening.
Okay. Okay, so we have another long, well, maybe long discussion for item number 10, Conference's Emergency Management Plan. We took this up last meeting and decided we needed some time to digest, you know, the, the basic plan or base plan. And we're now going to presumably make a decision whether to approve or not. So who's going to make a presentation here?
We have Cheryl online. She's been promoted.
Bernard, I just want to make sure I understand this. I'm just raising my hand here and speaking at the same time, I should raise my hand. Speak, sorry. We've had this presentation, Cheryl did a great job, what, a week ago, two weeks ago?
Yeah, wasn't it last week?
Yep, last week.
Two weeks ago.
No, all right. So we don't really need another presentation at this point, correct?
I don't think so. I mean, unless anyone has any questions, I have a few comments I'd like to make. Cheryl, do you have anything quick to say?
Hi, Cheryl Snyder, Deputy Director, Emergency Management. We are asking again that the select board approve this comprehensive emergency management base plan. It's the foundational document for how the town of Brookline will manage large-scale emergencies. It addresses the roles and responsibilities of all Brookline departments, agencies, government operations, organizations, volunteers, and community partners that may be involved in emergency response operations and identifies how regional, state, federal, private sector, and other resources may be activated to address disasters and emergencies in the community.
Thank you. That is short and sweet. I guess my, what I want to make sure that select board is focused on and doesn't require any further discussion. I mean, yeah, it doesn't require any further discussion. We can discuss it all you want. But to focus on understanding our role in the event of an emergency. I mean, I went, have gone through an emergency, you know, tornado, which destroyed an entity, almost destroyed an entity that I was on the board of. And one thing that I remember about that is that when the emergency happens, it's total chaos and confusion unless people really have developed almost muscle memory regarding what they're expected to do. So I just urge people to read through this from the standpoint of, you know, what is our role? You know, what happened to us? You know, what things do we, should, do we have the ability to do? And what things should we do? And in that regard, you know, there are three pages or, no, a bunch of pages that I'd like to just mention. Page 32, Emergency Management Leadership. 36, line of succession. 39, Brookline Government Organization, which is not really a big deal. And then something that is not gone into in great detail with respect to the select board is pages 74 to 75 regarding training and exercises. And the other thing that we, we should get a copy of, it's, it's online. I think it's actually linked in the document here, is our policy regarding delegation of authority to issue declarations of emergency. Because, you know, the select board is, is the only body that can declare an emergency. And what we did, when was it? It was pretty recent, was to delegate that authority to the town administrator and the emergency management director. So, I mean, we don't have to discuss that, but I just urge people to get those documents, read them, and understand them. Any discussion? Any questions for Cheryl?
I just have one question. There's, there's a lot of references and I'm sure a lot of important information in the annexes that will come following this. And I'm just wondering if there is, is a schedule or an inventory of those annexes so that we know sort of when all of those pieces are coming as well.
Sure, we put a schedule of the annexes, both functional and hazard-related, in the Emergency Management Strategic Plan that was approved last December, I believe. And so that strategic plan is available online in the OEM section of the town website. And we are currently working on several annexes in draft form. One is damage, damage assessment. And the other is emergency communication, public communications, which we're working very closely with Christina Metcalf, the Communications Officer.
Thank you.
Good question, Michael. Any other discussion? Paul, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I, yep, one quick question, thank you. So the exercises that are referenced in, in the document, how regularly are exercises conducted? So kind of a dry run, right?
Yes, so there are many levels of exercises, starting with tabletops, which are just sitting around talking through an issue, through several different kinds of smaller functional exercises, and then a large, multi-departmental functional exercise. At the moment, we are working on minimal exercises. We only have so many staff members and we're developing new plans while we're trying to exercise older plans. So this year, we are planning on doing tabletop in the next couple of weeks regarding hazardous materials, specifically lithium ion batteries, and how we will manage issues with those across departments in town. And later this year, we'll be planning a tabletop exercise to discuss mass care plans, including sheltering and family reunification, similar items.
Have we ever done a cross-departmental full-fledged exercise?
The Office of Emergency Management has not done, conducted a full-fledged cross-departmental exercise at this time. Recently, I believe last winter, the police and fire departments did some functional exercises at Baker School regarding active shooter response. But that participation was limited to the public safety departments and the schools.
Yeah, I just, my, you know, my view on this is until you actually conduct an exercise, it's all paper. And, you know, we, tonight, we heard from our Director of Communications, social media, et cetera. You know, we, I would just encourage that we start working on the planning for a full exercise, cross-up, and make it a tornado, whatever it is that's going to test and test everybody from the select board, town administrator, through all the departments, you know, we, social media, how we're going to communicate, how we're going to reach out to the press, et cetera. Otherwise, this is just, you know, it's paper.
Understood. And, and emergency management really has changed a great deal over the last decade or so. Our previous comprehensive emergency management plan was multiple binders, four-inch binders of, of paper that nobody really read or, or understood. The great part of how we're creating our emergency management plans at this time is that we are making them as brief and succinct as possible. Everything that is the framework is in this base plan. And that allows the annexes and other, other documents, such as standard operational procedures, to be very small. Additional plans that are being worked on right now, the annexes, are coming in somewhere between 12 and 15 pages each. They are meant to be pulled off a shelf when needed and quickly understood and give the institutional knowledge and background that someone would need to be able to manage that part of an emergency. to be able to manage that part of an emergency specifically. And one of the things that I would caution against is trying to plan a an exercise when people don't know what the plan is. So although emergency management is a constant cycle of planning, response, recovery, mitigation, planning, response, recovering, mitigation, and obviously, training throughout all of those. What we don't want to do is try and hold an exercise where nobody understands what the plan is. We want people to have the plan in front of them. Then we exercise that plan. Then we do a hot wash or an after action report to understand what did and didn't work. And then we do additional training and changes to the plan.
Okay, so you just heard my my only feedback was it'd be great to plan a more broad exercise. That's my feedback.
I would very much like to myself.
Thank you.
Or, you know, my my feedback is how about a a narrow plan, meaning, you know, it's unlikely that we're going to have a tsunami in in Brookline or tornado or earthquake, I think, right? But an active shooter situation, unfortunately, is, you know, a possibility.
It's a significant event.
Yes, a very significant event. We don't need to, you know, do a big tabletop exercise, but you know, maybe, you know, the select board needs to know, you know, what what they should do and what they should not do. You know, we shouldn't run out to the scene in order to, I don't know, talk to people and or maybe we should, but, you know, things like that, you know, so that we have a checklist of of things that sort of guide us when when a situation occurs because it's going to be chaos in in so many ways.
Understood. And one of the things that we will be doing in those annexes is providing checklists for people to follow. The extreme heat emergency SOP that was recently used for the extreme heat emergency earlier this week is one example of that. We used the standard operating procedure, which has just been finalized. Had the emergency, several things happened, not least of which that senior center lost air conditioning during the heat emergency. So then we have to go, okay, so in this case, we have to be ready to transport people from a cooling center that may lose power or air conditioning to another cooling center. And so we now have a plan for how to deal with that. So it it's a combination of both exercising and real world events that will go into the constant updating of these plans.
Right. Any further questions? Oh, David, is that your?
Yes, I have a question. So throughout this plan, there are references to procedures, and I'm hearing the term checklists. Where will these procedures and checklists be kept? How is that decided? I mean, some of it would be self explanatory, depending on the nature of the emergency. But overall, how does one access the more specific step by step process for addressing a calamity that could occur? And also, how does one navigate through jurisdictional questions? And what I mean by jurisdiction is not just federal, state, local, but also between departments and between public and private. So to provide a concrete example, near me, maybe a few months ago, some trees caught fire from a power line. And there was some initial confusion about what could town officials touch, what did Eversource need to address? And I'm sure it was all eventually sorted out, but those types of questions I can see cropping up, and I just provided a real life example of one. So who would be in possession of that type of information? How would it be disseminated?
So that's actually an example of the kind of institutional knowledge that we are attempting to capture in the plan annexes that are being developed. We are looking at the processes, looking at lessons learned from other communities, looking at lessons learned at the federal level and trying to understand how we will manage specific activities in the midst of an emergency. And so obviously, we can't make this all appear out of thin air, unfortunately. It takes a time to develop these plans, socialize them throughout the town via the emergency management team meetings and conversations and to make sure that everybody is in agreement on who is responsible for each type of activity, whether it's communicating with private entities like Eversource or communicating across town boundaries with Boston or Newton for situations that might occur cross boundary or even communicating with MEMA and/or FEMA.
Great, thank you. Any further questions? Seeing none, David, no one's raising their hands. Okay, so I will move approval of the town's comprehensive emergency management plan, which is a base plan. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Scoyac?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
David Pearlman?
Aye.
Michael Rubenstein?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you very much.
Next, boards and commissions reappointments. By the way, I have to say that this meeting went along a lot smoother than I thought it would, with me being remote here. Except my coffee, I apologize. Anyway, okay, question of appointing Kenneth Lewis to the Economic Development Advisory Board. Any questions or comments regarding this appointment? Is that your hand raised, Michael?
No.
Oh, okay, sorry. Why don't we do these together? Because I don't think there'll be any questions regarding any of them, but, you know, we asked. Question of reappointing Leroy, and actually, Kenneth Lewis was a reappointment. Next is reappointing Leroy Watkins as a member of the Small Business Development Committee. Any questions or comments regarding this appointment or reappointment? And finally, question of reappointing Pamela Harvey as a member of the Conservation Commission. Any questions regarding her? Okay, then I move approval of the reappointments of various people to various boards, Kenneth Lewis to Economic Development Advisory Boards, Leroy Watkins, Small Business Development Committee, and Pamela Harvey, Conservation Commission. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Scoyac?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
David Pearlman?
Aye.
Michael Rubenstein?
Aye.
That wasn't me messing up your name, it was me coughing, okay? And chair votes aye. Okay, finally, the final item on our agenda, unless there's someone in the audience who would like to give a public comment at our, at the end of this meeting, is the fall town meeting dates. Melissa, I assume that you're going to enlighten us on on this matter.
Yeah, yes, you should have in your packet a draft schedule for the upcoming town meeting in November. So we are looking for an opening of the warrant date of August seventh, which is a Thursday, and then a closing on September fourth, which is also a Thursday at noon. And so given those opening and closing dates, seventy five days from that would bring us to a town meeting date of November eighteenth. And so the schedule would go the eighteenth, nineteenth, and twentieth. If we needed additional dates, we would skip over the week of Thanksgiving, and then we would look to reconvene on December second, third, and fourth. These dates have been run by both the moderator and the town clerk to make sure that they're available to cover it. And, you know, we'll put out the notices once the board sets the dates.
Okay.
Michael has a.
I just have one quick question. It it's typical that there are six dates.
So I had five and Neil suggested I add a sixth, so I don't know what he sees coming at us, but.
Okay, just in case. Okay, any further questions about the town meeting schedule? I move approval of schedule for the town meeting, fall two thousand twenty five. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Scoyac?
Aye.
David, Paul Warren?
Aye.
David Pearlman?
Aye.
Michael Rubenstein?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. And that is the end of our agenda. Let me just say that I want to let people know in the audience, as well as on the select board, although I assume people know this, that we will not be meeting next Thursday or next Tuesday, July eighth. Our next meeting is July fifteen. So unless any public comment that has been waiting for the end of this meeting, is there, Charlie?
It looks like Regina would like to speak.
Okay.
You'll have three minutes.
I don't need three minutes, but thank you. Regina Frohley from South Brookline. As you do policies that have to do with communication with your constituents, which is the entire town. I know it's hard for you to believe, but there are people right in my neighborhood who do not have access to the internet. So as you do this, maybe there's another way to add that component. I don't have a magic wand, but factor it in as something you have to deal with and find a way to do it because they really do want to know what's going on, but they don't, for any number of reasons, do not have computers. So I just want to call that to your attention. And when it comes to anything to do with transportation, please remember there's no drivers committee in town. There's pedestrians, there's bicycles, there's all kinds of other committees, but nothing for the drivers. So they are, it's become very prominent lately that they don't really factor into most discussion because they're not notified or involved in an organized kind of way. Thank you.
An interesting comment. Thank you, Regina.
There are thirteen folks online. If anyone would like to speak, they can raise their hand now. We have thirteen participants, Bernard, and no one is indicating their desire to speak.
Okay, with that, I will end the meeting. Thank you, everyone. Have a nice evening.
Thanks.
All right.